This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
All right, call to order. Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting of June 17th, 2020. Based on Governor Baker's executive orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GL, Chapter 30A, Section 20, and signed Thursday, March 12th, 2020, this planning board meeting is being held virtually using the Zoom platform. My name is Christine Graham-Mullin and as Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at 6:33. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken as normal. I will now take a roll, a roll call. Board members, as you hear your name called, unmute yourself and answer affirmatively, and then please place yourself back on mute. Michael Burtwhistle.
Here.
Maria Chow.
Here.
Jack Jemsek.
Here.
David Levenstein.
Here.
Doug Marshall.
Present.
Janet McGowan.
Here.
Board members, if technical difficulties arise, we may need to pause to rectify the problem and then continue the meeting. If you do have technical issues, please let Sean of IT or Pam know. Discussion may be suspended while the technical issues are addressed and the minutes will note if a disconnection has occurred. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your raised hand and will call upon you to speak. After speaking, remember to please remute yourself. Opportunity for public comment will be provided during the general public comment period at the, towards, at the beginning of the meeting and at other appropriate times throughout the meeting. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during the general public comment period. If you wish to make a comment during a public comment period time, you must join the meeting via Zoom teleconferencing link. This link is shown on the slide on the screen and can be entered into a search engine. The link can also be found on the meeting agenda, which is located in two places on the town website. One way is through the calendar listing on the main homepage. Find this meeting and then click on event details and the link will be there. A second way is to go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda link. On the agenda, there is a link towards the top of the page where it states virtual meeting. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raised hand button when the public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using the telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your telephone. When called upon, please identify yourself and state your full name and address and then put yourself back into mute unfinished. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes and at the discretion of the planning board chair. If these guidelines are not complied with or the speaker exceeds their allotted time, their participation will be disconnected from the meeting. Included on tonight's agenda, item three is the joint public hearing with the Community Resource Committee of the Town Council, CRC. The board and the CRC will discuss and hear public comment regarding a proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw, Article 11, Administration and Enforcement, Section 11.25, Planning Board Decision. The proposed amendment would allow site plan review applications to be approved by a majority of the planning board members participating in voting. Also scheduled tonight is a presentation by the Valley Community Development Corp. for ZBA, FY 2020-39-1, 32 North Hampton Road. Tonight's presentation is an opportunity for the planning board to review the project and to offer recommendations to the ZBA. While this is not a public hearing, the planning board will will take limited public comment at tonight's meeting for a maximum period of 30 minutes. The planning board will not be responding to the public comment, but the Director of Planning, Christine Bestrop, may reply with clarifying additional information at her discretion. The ZBA will be opening a public hearing on this project on June 25th. Written comments may be sent to the Planning Department, email planning@amherstmass.gov and by using the online comment form. Moving onward, the slide will now show the meeting agenda. Again, note the virtual meeting Zoom link. So we will go to item one, minutes, and I believe we have one set of minutes dated April 29th, 2020. I can see that we had all members of the planning board in attendance. None were absent. So we had these in our pocket and hold on, my screen has disappeared. Let me see if there's hands. Yes.
Were you planning to do, have public comment?
Did I skip right out?
On the agenda?
I am, but that's item two.
Minutes is now item one, Chris, and then general public comment is number two.
That's okay. You just, it threw me for a sec, but then I'm like, I think we're.
Oh, you're right. You're right.
Okay. So at this time, I'm looking for hands from the board for anyone who either has a comment on these minutes, correction, or wants to make a motion to approve. I recognize Doug.
Motion to approve.
Okay, and I, Jack?
Second.
Second. Great. Okay, so we have them on the table. Are there any comment suggestions as of right now? I'm seeing no hands, so I believe we can just take a vote. I will do a roll call again. So first, Michael Burtwhistle.
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Jack?
Approve.
David?
Approve.
Doug?
Approve.
Janet?
Approve.
Great. And myself also. So that's unanimous. So we're done with those. So at this time, I'll move to item two, which is the public comment period. I'm gonna look for the hands. This is a time where the public can speak on something that's not on our agenda. So if there's someone here who's just here to make a statement at this time, I'm seeing no hands. Chris, do, I mean, sorry, Pam, do we have any phone calls?
I'm seeing no hands. I am seeing no phone calls. So at this point, no one is requesting the public to speak.
Okay. So at that point, I have 6:40, so we can move to item three, joint public hearing with Community Resources Committee. And I do have something to read for that.
Before you read it.
Yes.
I have to call the meeting in order.
Oh, good. Oh, let me see. Oh, okay. I was looking at one, the call to order. That was like the big meeting. Okay, yes.
We got it. So now 6:41 PM and seeing a quorum of the Community Resources Committee of the Town Council present. I am calling the meeting to order for June 17th, 2020. At this time, I will just go through all of my committee members' names to make sure they can hear us and we can hear them. So I will start with Shawnee Valmill.
Here. Can hear.
Mandy Joe Hanifey is here. Evan Ross.
Here.
Steve Schreiber.
Yes.
And Sarah Schwartz.
Yep. Here.
Excellent. So at this time, we, our agenda item would be moving to a joint public hearing. So I am going to pass the presiding of the CRC meeting to the Chair of the Planning Board in order to open the public hearing for both bodies and then preside over that public hearing.
Thank you. So now I'm gonna move to actually opening the public hearing. So I have 6:42. In accordance with provisions of MGL, Chapter 40A, and the Amherst Home Rule Charter, this joint public hearing of the Amherst Planning Board and the Community Resources Committee of the Town Council, Town Council have been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding proposed zoning bylaw, Article 11, Administration and Enforcement, Section 11.25, Planning Board Decision. To see if the town will vote to recommend the zoning bylaw by amending Section 11.25, Planning Board Decision, to allow site plan review applications to be approved by a majority of those planning board members participating in voting. So. At this point, so I'll be talking to both the CRC and the planning board. Are there any disclosures or statements that need to be made at this time? I don't see any hands. So as far as a presentation, I'm just gonna give a short introduction and then I'm going to pass it on to Chris Bestrop, who will give a historical background of where this bylaw has been over the last 30-plus years. And then it will come back to me and we'll open it up to board discussion. So I just, part of this is for the benefit of the public and, and maybe part of CRC. We're all familiar with the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. We, they help provide a lot of training and are experts on zoning and planning issues of the state. And they have a definition for site plan review that says it establishes criteria for the layout, scale, appearance, safety, environmental impacts of commercial or industrial development in an attempt to fit, in quotes, larger projects into the community. Site plan review usually focuses on parking, traffic, drainage, roadway construction, signage, utilities, screening, lighting, and other aspects of the proposal to arrive at the best possible design for the location. In the usual situation, site plan approval must be obtained before the building or special permit is issued. Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, the quote-unquote, the zoning act establishes a system of permits to authorize uses and of structures, variances, special permits, and building permits. Site plan review is not mentioned in this zoning act and cannot operate alone to authorize a use or a structure. Accordingly, the site plan review usually operates in conjunction with one of these other devices. Site plan review is about details, regulation of use, rather than a prohibition, and that denial is only in exceptional circumstances. So that's just to give a little background of what we're actually talking about, to clarify with people. It's different than special permit. They're totally two different things and we'll only be talking about SPR, site plan review, tonight. So to go a level deeper, I'm gonna pass it to Chris Bestrop, who is going to give us historical background on where this bylaw has sort of come from.
Good evening. I'm Chris Bestrop, Planning Director, and I wanted to give you a little history of where we are with this. When, a long time ago, back in the, I don't know, 70s, doesn't seem that long ago to me, but anyway, the town had two forms of permits. One was special permit and that was based on, as Christine said, Chapter 40A of the Mass General Laws. The town also had something called plan approval. And plan approval was the building commissioner and the planning director got together and looked at plans that didn't require a special permit and evaluated them for the same things that special, that site plan reviews are evaluated for now. Traffic, landscaping, lighting, placement of the building on the, on the property, dimensional requirements, et cetera. That was really only two people who were reviewing things. So along about 1988, the town introduced site plan review. And at that time, town meeting was voting on these things. And when site plan review was introduced, it was felt that it was best to mimic both the process and the voting requirements of the special permit because people were quite familiar with special permit, but they weren't yet familiar with site plan review. So in 1988, town meeting adopted site plan review and they used the same voting quantum that was required for a special permit. At that time, the planning board had nine members. So the requirement was two-thirds of the membership, which ended up being six members needing to be, needing to vote. Then it was actually two-thirds with more than, excuse me, two-thirds. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little mixed up. So it was a two-thirds vote that was required because we wanted to mimic the special permit. So then later on, in 1998, the town had become a little more familiar with site plan review and they decided to to change the wording to say the concurring vote of at least two-thirds, but no fewer than five members of the planning board should vote to approve a site plan review. And at the time, that made sense. Two-thirds was six, but if you only had eight members present, you could potentially, or even if you had, yeah, if you had eight members present, you could go with a five-member vote to approve something. So that was in 1998 and ever since then, the wording of the of the requirement for voting has been the same. The concurring vote of at least two-thirds, but not fewer than five of the members of the board participating in voting shall be required for any decision on a site plan application abstain being considered not to be voting. So then along came the town charter. And the town charter in 2018 changed the number of planning board members from nine members to seven members. And in January of 2019, the planning board started to look at the issue of should we change the voting requirements to be more in line with the fact that we have fewer planning board members? So the planning board held a meeting in, I think it was January 16th of 2019, and they began to discuss this with regard to the rules and regulations, the planning board's rules and regulations, as well as talking about potentially changing the zoning bylaw. In June, I think of 2019, the zoning subcommittee and the planning board came up with a a voting requirement that they wanted to present to town council. And they were getting ready to schedule a public hearing, but then they became aware that town council wasn't really ready to receive zoning amendments yet. So they sort of put it on the back burner. Since then, it has become, it has come back to the front burner again. So we have a current current language that is being proposed as part of this zoning amendment. And perhaps Christine Graham-Mullin can talk a little about that.
Okay, thank you. So as Chris said, this has evolved and more time has gone by. It has given some of us, you know, because it has been being kicked around in planning board for, like Chris said, for a year and a half. It's given a lot of us time to go look at best practices, what other towns are doing, especially towns that are trying to be more attractive to economics, smart growth. There's a lot coming out of Governor Baker's initiatives regarding both SPR, but special permits, and also requirements for towns to change their bylaws. So. So we have come to this, what is being proposed. It did go to town council. We didn't see any problems with this. Other towns have this kind. Our closest neighbors, North Hampton has this, also East Hampton. And some places are actually letting go of some of their site plan review and just making it more administrative. We've done that on a little bit. Some of the planning board members who are older realize that we're no longer getting as much signs and maybe fences, stuff like that, because we recently, only a couple of years ago, changed the bylaw to allow administration, mostly the building commissioner, to have a little more power to review things. And this is happening on a larger and larger scale. Hadley does this and North Hampton, and we could go into lots of other towns. So this is being presented and we want to open it up. I'll open it up to both planning board and CRC for general discussion right now. So please raise your hand if you have questions or a statement you want to make about this. Or ask questions to Chris. Yep, I see a hand. Janet McGowan?
I have two questions. One of them is if Chris could, maybe it would be helpful if Christine Bestrop could explain when we do site plan review versus special permit. Like what's the difference? Like why would you go into one process and not the other? And then I'm wondering why, what is the reason to change the two-thirds requirement? Because I know other towns use that for site plan review. So that's my two-part question.
So I can say something to the second part. A lot of towns do still have the two-thirds, but in my research, what I've found is they are in the similar boat to Amherst, where that was determined as a bylaw from the 80s or 90s, and they just haven't modernized or recontemplated it and changed it. But ones that do, the new best practice is to go with a simple majority. So Chris, if you wanna, you know, give again the difference sort of between why a special permit and they continue to be are much more rigorous.
Yep. So a special permit is considered to be a use that is not necessarily fitting within the zoning area, the zoning district that it is allowed in. It, it may need special consideration. It may need special kinds of conditions in order to have it fit in. The other thing about a special permit is that it can be denied. With a site plan review, there's an assumption that the use is suitable for that particular location, that it's allowed. And we often use the term by right and we use that in quotes because you still have to go through the site plan review process. But it's a use that's considered fitting in that particular location. The only thing is that you want someone to look at the, the proposal carefully to make sure that it complies with the zoning bylaw and that, you know, it, it sort of, it is a correct kind of presentation or correct kind of arrangement of the things on the site. And so the planning board often makes comments about parking, for instance, moving parking or lessening parking or increasing parking. They might make comments about rearranging lighting, making lighting stronger, shielding lighting, whatever, or possibly, you know, asking people to put walkways in various locations that they might not have thought of. So it's really, you know, the assumption is that the use is allowed and then we're just looking at the plan to make sure that it fulfills all the requirements that we needed to. And we're also looking at the building or the structure that's being proposed to make sure that it fulfills the requirements and that it will be an asset to the town. But we're not looking at the use. So that is the difference. So having the two-thirds vote for a special permit really makes sense because it's a little bit more, it's a higher bar that you have to cross to, to have a special permit approved. And the site plan review is considered to be already allowed. You just want to tell someone how to do it. So that's why it seems reasonable to lessen the requirement from two-thirds down to a majority. Now, I will say that when the two-thirds was originally required, the reason it was required was because the people who were proposing site plan review didn't want to sort of rock the boat. They wanted to have something that was similar enough to a special permit that, you know, town meeting members and others wouldn't be fearful about adopting it. And then when the, when the vote was, you know, eventually changed to allow two-thirds, but a minimum of five members, five members was considered to be a reasonable, was a majority of nine really, but was considered to be a reasonable number to to approve a site plan review.
So, I'm sorry, Chris. Thank you for that. That is really helpful. So can you give me like two or three buildings that were special permit because the use wasn't, you know, normal for the area? I'm like, so, I mean, just trying to figure out, tease out why you're going, why we go one route versus the other? Like what, like what buildings got a special permit because the use wasn't considered quite appropriate or allowable? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah. May I go ahead and answer that?
Yes, please.
So Aspen Heights on North Hampton Road, I think it's 408 North Hampton Road. It's a building that's going up between Green Leaves and Domino's Pizza. And that building is, the use is not allowed in that zoning district. And the way it was permitted by the Zoning Board of Appeals is because there was an original use there of a motel and an apartment. And so the applicants used the Section 9.22 of the zoning bylaw to say that the use that was there is similar enough to the use that's being proposed, that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood or very dissimilar in character. So they're going from a motel and an apartment building to a larger building that is an apartment building. So that's an example of a special permit being required for use. Other types of special permits for use include Class II restaurants, where restaurants are open after 11:30 and serve alcohol and maybe in the vicinity of a residential unit in a residential zoning district. Gas stations usually require a special permit because they, you know, they can be kind of a disruptive item in a, in a neighborhood, but sometimes they're also allowed by site plan review, depending on where they're located. So, you know, uses that are considered to be a little bit deviating from the norm in that particular location would require special permit versus site plan review, which would be considered normal in those locations. Does that help?
It does. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm gonna go to the next one, but Pam, could you put up the slide for people to see that showed all the SPRs that we dealt from last year? Yeah, just to show, okay, you've got them on dual. So the.
Got there. Can you see them?
I think if someone can speak out if they can't see them. But the one on the right just is a summary of all the SPRs and the types that came to planning board last year. So that gives people a little bit of insight, noting that there were 15 and two of them were buildings. But we did have four that were, that came back to us like a second round for a modification to an existing SPR. And then the other ones there. So I'll call IC Michael and then I see Steve Schreiber.
Okay. I'm wondering what the problem is, what the need for changing this bylaw is. In my limited, admitted, admittedly limited time on the planning board, I can't recall a situation where a site plan review was objected to by more than one person, which would have been a two-thirds majority, a, a two-thirds vote, a majority, plurality would have been passed, whatever the, whatever the numbers that the bylaw states. So I'm really wondering what problem we're trying to solve here by making this change. It seems to me that, that when the, when the bylaw was originally written back in 1988, the notion of two-thirds to mimic, or at least to mirror the special permit bylaw seemed reasonable. It still seems reasonable. I think finally, the, the notion that the largest possible buy-in from the planning board is in the best interests of the town and of the developer for that matter. If, if a developer is faced with opposition, significant opposition, then there's, there's a problem there. If we're just going ahead with, with pet, with what's been going, what's happened in the past, there seem to be no real problems here. So I guess my question is, why are we making, why are we trying to make this change?
May I say something about that?
Yeah.
So if you require a vote of five members of the planning board, you're actually over two-thirds. You're something like 71. You're something like seventy one and a half percent of the of the board. So that's actually a. More of a requirement than is required for special permit. So it's just. It just doesn't seem. Like the right thing.
Just to add to that, there's been lawsuits over the last decades. I think one of them, the big one that people refer to is in Chris Memo, the Osberg versus the Planning Board of Sturbridge. That that court case said that site plan approval requires only a majority vote. So anytime you go more rigorous on that, if you were to deny an SPR. It opens up the possibility for a lawsuit. But like you pointed out, we we rare, I don't even ever know of a site plan review that has been denied. And it is discouraged from, it's supposed to be you're working improving. The details, but. Michael, do you have anything else or?
Yeah, I I I I think consensus is the is the goal. It seems to me that's been the goal. And. If we're if we have two votes against, but that's not really a consensus, whether it's nine people or seven people. But that's still, that's still good enough. If we have. Flat out, just a straight majority, then we could have as many as three people objecting. And it would still be a legitimate approval. So I if we're not going to go with a three, a two thirds majority, a two thirds vote. I think we should at least. Keep the not fewer than four. As part of the of the of the of the bylaw change. That would at least. Go a little bit toward. Toward satisfying what seems to me to be a a concern. As it now, as it now stands, if if we're only, if only five people are voting on it, it could be only three people to approve. And I don't think that's a good idea. I think that's puts us in the wrong. Position relative to the town. And I think whether lawsuits aside, whether. I think our primary obligation is to the people in town and not to the legal community in this in this regard.
I'll move to Stephen Schreiber and then next up will be Jack.
Hi, everyone. You can hear me, yes. Okay, so just a few comments. In part for the previous speakers, so. The what's determined to be a site plan review and what's determined to be a special permit is by the act of town meeting. So it wasn't Chris I made the decision. It wasn't the planning board that made the decision. It was the legislative body. So that's an important distinction. So town meeting decided that these particular. Projects shall be site plan review and it determined that these particular projects shall be special permit. Special permit is also used for things like height and bulk and, you know, things like that, but that is. How that decision was made in the zoning code. It wasn't the planning staff, wasn't the planning board. It was a legislative body. The other thing is I was on the planning board for almost ten years and we had lots of problems with quorums. In fact, we had lots of problems with core. I'm sorry, I actually spoke like we had lots of problems with Quora. So. And, you know, good for the current planning board for probably not having that problem. But certainly, Chris and before Chris, Jonathan Tucker, remember lots of times it was hard to get six people to show up. There's another problem of continued hearings. So virtually no site plan review hearings are heard in one night. They're heard over multiple nights. Massachusetts law requires your participation. In all hearings, there are some exceptions to that now than from the good old days. That you can miss one and watch the the video of it. You can miss one hearing. And you can participate remotely now. So these are things that have changed. So my my last statement before I yield the floor is democracy. So I love democracy, right? And the basic principle of democracy. Is that a quorum is fifty percent plus one. So everyone has an ability to participate or everyone who's qualified has the ability to participate. As long as more than half of those people show up. In almost all cases, except for special permits. Well, actually, in almost all cases, a quorum is fifty percent plus one. And in almost all cases of democracy, a vote, affirmative vote. Is that quorum or that I'm sorry, that group that showed up to participate. Fifty percent of that group plus one. So you're absolutely right that a quorum of a. Seven person planning board is four and a majority of that four is three. So a site plan review. Under the proposal would only would be three members if the other members chose not to show up or couldn't not show up. Or could not participate in the many ways that are available now. So I'm in favor of the changes as written.
Thank you. Just to point out something that Steve had mentioned on the chart on the right. The parentheses at the end of the specific projects, that tells how many meetings it came back to planning board. Just to give people, so you can see the ones that are just an asterisk, that's one night and they tend to be very simple ones, but people can note that. Jack is next and then I have Evan.
So yeah, Steve mentioned. The. The related issues with the quorum, which is something I wanted to point out. I mean, I see a situation. Where, you know, people have to recuse themselves. We may have. You know, we may not have a full planning board. Given certain scenarios, you know, we may be down to a skeleton crew, say of five people. And if one person has to recuse himself, we're down to four. And and so I, you know, I'm in favor of the majority in that situation, say there's four. That three would be a majority and pass that. So. That's just, you know, basic mechanics of the size and 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 making it work and I and I. I agree with the by right aspect of. Site plan review versus the special permit. And. And also I just, I I feel it's like it would be a bad look for Amherst. To not go with the majority because, you know, we we do, we are, we are in a housing crisis. You know, locally, I think we have an economic development. A struggle, basically, especially now with with the downtown and potential, you know, vacancies, et cetera. And I guess my my last point is I I feel very strange as a planning board member. You know, dictating our rules. And it just seems like there's a, there's a strange, you know, self-interest where we're. You know, it's like, we're we're not, we're not, you know, a power sort of entity, I don't think. And, you know, I feel like we're we're voting to how how we should be doing things, but I think that's. The town council's responsibility. I think ultimately it is, but I just wanted to say that. I'm not going to abstain on the vote or anything like that, but I just feel like this is the town council's. Decision and obviously we're just offering a recommendation. And I think that's, yeah, that's, so I'm in favor of it as written.
Okay, Evan, and then next I see Mandy Joe's hand up.
Hey, thank you. So I just wanted to say. I served on the second generation of the by law review committee, which was tasked with bringing. Our general and zoning bylaws into conformity with our new charter. And and this was something that was briefly discussed because the fact that we reduced the size of our planning board. But kept this vote quantum felt like it was. You know, it felt like part of part of bringing our. Bylaw into conformity with the charter would be looking at something like that. And we didn't take action on that. We didn't. End up making a recommendation on that because to some extent it wasn't, it's a. There are other options and what we have before us is that there are several options and we felt like that was something that. Really needed to be in the domain of the council and the planning boards to discuss. But at its most basic, to me, the decision to do something. Is very much in line with the transition to the new government and recognizing that it doesn't make any kind of sense. To keep the same vote quantum after having shrunk the size of the planning board by two members. So I think there's, there's a whole lot of rationale to do something. And so I'm hoping that all of us on CRC and planning board can agree at least on that. And the debate is really over what that something is and what the number is. I I I'm supportive of the simple majority. I'm supportive of it for the reasons that Jack said. Which is that we are in the midst of a housing crisis and that I think we do need to send a message that when we say something's by right. We're not going to erect unnecessarily burdensome barriers to those things. And if we want housing, if we want economic development. I I think that we need to show that when we say something's by right, we're not going to hold it to the same standard as the special permit. And also for what Steve said about the fact that if you have an absolute minimum number. If you have issues with quorum, if you have issues with conflict of interest. That number all of a sudden becomes more significant. It it's easy to say, oh, it needs to be a minimum of four. Until you only have a quorum of members show up for something that's usually pretty simple. And so. I hope there's agreement that we have to do something and I'm supportive of the simple majority.
Thank you. Mandy, and then I see David's hand.
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna try not to repeat what others have said, but. You know, Michael asked why now? And I think Evan covered part of it, you know, we changed forms of governments. The size of the planning board reduced. Five is now a large number of seven. And and doesn't necessarily reflect at all the reduction in planning board size. But I I go back to what Christine Gray Mullin said. That there are legal rulings out there that say site plan reviews have to be a majority. And so if we don't adopt a majority. We are opening up ourselves as a town to a lawsuit. If say, you know, this, if this, say in the last year, if the planning board had. Not adopted a site plan review, not passed it because the planning board of seven members got four votes instead of five. And the bylaw set a minimum of five. The applicant could come and sue the town because it's in direct violation of. Legal rulings that say site plan reviews are majorities. And so. Bylaws need updated occasionally. They should be updated to reflect the current. Best practices, the current legal rulings, and it seems like this one. Whether it be two thirds or five members, both of those numbers are out of date with the current size of the planning board. And the current legal rulings as to what site plan review means. And and so that's to me reason enough to bring this in front and say we need to update it. We need to fix this so that we're not opening up ourselves to lawsuits.
David?
Well. I I support the change to the 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 language for reasons that have been spoken to, but also I think sort of for substantive reason. As well, not just for the change in the the numbers of the the membership, but. I think in in the, there is a difference that has evolved as I've learned, I believe. My short time on the board between a site plan review and special permit. Special permits in the chapter forty A. So and there and and there are rules and regulations from state statute about that. Site plan reviews, something adopted by towns, by municipalities and is not a creature of state statute, but is a creature of local law. And and I think what's evolved is that it's a, it's as Chris. Either or both of the Chris's earlier said, it's a regulation of the use rather than it's prohibition. And so it's it's a, it's a way to influence design that is already permitted for that. Design and use that is already allowed for that particular site. And that part of the bargain there is to get the 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 applicant to come to the table in order to be. Influenced by the board in charge and and. And fit their plans in with a broader consensus of the community. And that's great, but that shouldn't be the same kind of hurdle, I think, is what has evolved in the over. Over time, over the past few decades, that this has been established in Massachusetts. Is that special permits have a higher, higher bar, a higher threshold that has to be. Satisfied by by the applicant before the appropriate special permit granting authority. Because the use that the applicant is requesting for the special permit. Is not clearly allowed under the zoning law. The site plan, these, those uses are allowed under the, under the zoning law. And 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 the applicant's coming and and is now subject to reasonable conditions. And that's the influence that the process allows. And I think that maintaining that. Difference in the voting requirements. Making of the site plan review a lower threshold, voting threshold in order to pass. Is consistent with that model of review and influence that. Applicants have when presenting these matters before the relevant municipal body. And so that's why I. I I think it's compelling and necessary, the the numbers and the quorum and the aside is to. Is to be clear that to to applicants that when they apply for site plan review. It's not as. The bar is not as high. For as it is for a special permit. And we want, and I think we want to encourage that. So that so that the boards can have that that potential influence. There are other issues I have with this that are that are ripple effects of looking at this. Change, but I'll speak to that later. I don't want to further muddy my comments, but thank you very much.
Maria?
So, yeah, I agree with David and actually that chart you have right now on the screen on the left. Shows exactly why I think we need to do just majority and not two thirds and not minimal four. Because I really appreciate that chart because it shows exactly what happens when we go from seven members present to four members present. It becomes more difficult than a special permit, which everyone has been saying. The past, yeah, I'll echo it. Yeah, it's it's site plan review is not a special permit. And so the numbers literally tell you that that's what the the site plan review becomes. As it becomes more arduous than special permit. So I just, yeah, appreciated that chart because, you know. The math alone, I think, is the reason why I'm gonna support it as written. That's it.
I see no more members' hands that write up, so I'm gonna switch to the public questions right now. So I'm clicking on the attendees. If there's any attendees that would like to ask a question or make a comment about this right now. I'm watching and Pam, are there, watch if there's any phone call. In fact, I'll just ask, do we have anyone on phone call right now?
We didn't, and I'm just getting back in there. Hold on. I don't believe so because I believe they're usually at the top. And I don't see anybody on phone and I don't see any raised hands.
I do not either. So I will come back to the board if there's any other. Comments. We do have the Pam, if you want to put up the order form that came from Mr. Barr today. I know you have one of those.
I do.
Christine, may I make a comment?
Absolutely. Didn't see your hand. Sorry, Chris.
I don't have the ability to raise my hand since I'm a co-host. So I'm sorry to just burst in, but.
Good to know. Thank you. I'll watch on the screen more for you.
I would actually be more comfortable with wording that included the words. But not fewer than four of the members of the board. I feel that's more in keeping with the history of what we've done. And when I look at some of the projects that are site plan review projects, it makes me. A little uncomfortable to think that they could be. Approved by only three members of the board and I'll mention a couple of them. Kendrick Place, which has thirty six units at the corner of Triangle and East Pleasant. One East Pleasant, which has a hundred and thirty five. One East Pleasant, which has a hundred and thirty-five units at the Carrot Shops location. Boltwood Place, which is in the Boltwood Garage area. The Southeast Commons, which is Amir McCheese's project that had fifty-seven units. And four sixty-two Main Street, John Robleski's project that had twenty-four units. I feel like those projects are, I'm very glad that they are approved by site plan review, but I, I don't think I would feel comfortable having those projects approved by three out of a total of seven members of the planning board. I think that, you know, when we say majority, I think we really need to stick to the majority of four being a majority of seven members. And I think another thing I wanted to mention is that, over time, the Planning Department has worked with the Planning Board to lessen the number of special permits in, in response to a huge wave of development back in the seventies, sixties and seventies. Town meeting made all kinds of things by special permit. And so we've been trying, working hard to make that not a requirement anymore and to little by little, uh, change things from requiring a special permit to requiring site plan review. And I feel like there's going to be resistance to doing that in the future if the voting requirement is only three out of seven members. And the other thing I wanted to say is, I, I believe that some of these other cities and towns that have a requirement just a majority of the members present and voting may also have more up-to-date zoning bylaws. And I think, you know, we certainly need to update our zoning bylaw. Some of these places have design guidelines in place. So a, a group of three members could look at the design guidelines and say, oh, yes, this project fits with the design guidelines, let's go with it. Or has more clear parking requirements. And so we would say, oh, yes, well, this project meets the clear parking requirement, so let's go with it. But given the fact that we have a, a bylaw that really needs updating and a lot of work, I feel like it's, it's really challenging for, for me to accept the idea that three members of the planning board could vote to approve something that's pretty big and pretty, you know, has a big impact on other people. Another thing that site plan review is required for is cluster subdivisions. So we've just been through a review of a cluster subdivision down in South Amherst that required subdivision approval, and then it also required site plan review. And that was a development of eight homes along West Street going south to, to South Hadley, and that required site plan review. So I, I don't feel that I would be comfortable with that being approved by three members of the planning board. So I'm just offering those comments to say that I would be more comfortable with four as the voting majority.
Thank you. Mandy Jo, and then I see Michael Burtwistle after that.
Yeah, I mean, I understand in some sense where that sentiment is coming from, because it can sound jarring if we're going from nine members, two thirds, we'd need six on that board to now majority of those voting, and that could allow for three. It sounds like it's a big change, but again, all of the plant, all of the projects that the Planning Director just mentioned are all mixed-use buildings. And so it makes me wonder, maybe the problem isn't with our voting quantum. Maybe the problem is with the bylaws as a whole for mixed-use buildings, or the problem might be with the parking design regulations. And so I, I guess I'm not in favor of tracking a voting requirement to not do what is best practices and what our neighboring communities are doing. You know, what North Hampton does affects whether, sometimes affects whether someone chooses to apply for that site plan review in North Hampton or in Amherst. And to not do this because our zoning is old doesn't make sense to me. I, I, I'm just gonna say that. And, you know, to me, that would say we need to update the rest of our zoning to, to get better in line with best practices for today across all of the zoning. And then I also go back to if we put that wording in, which at, at this point I don't support. If you only have five people present and voting because one person had to recuse themselves and another person couldn't comply with the Mullins rule, and so they missed part of the hearing, suddenly you need an eighty percent voting quantum, four out of five, in order to actually get a site plan review approved? That just, again, opens us up to a huge number of lawsuits. Or, say, one person is in the hospital and can't participate. One person had that Mullins rule that they couldn't comply with and missed a different hearing because it lasted eight times, and one person had to recuse themselves, or maybe two people had to refuse themselves, and you've only got four people that are actually eligible to vote. Now you need a hundred percent? I, I just, that, to me, is not in the spirit of site plan reviews.
Okay, Michael, and then next I see Janet.
Well, all these hypotheticals aside, I, I would, I would, I'm, I would like to move a, an amendment to the bylaw which would reinstate, but not fewer than, and change the five to four. And I make that as a motion.
Can we do a motion? I think we have to.
Not in the middle of a hearing.
Yeah, we're in a hearing, but I think what Michael's saying is he would like to add a line about no fewer than four. So that's out there if other members are in agreement with him. So I'll keep calling on hands. Janet, I'll call on Janet, and then I have Steve Schreiber.
So I, I have a few things to say. I just read Osberg versus Planning Board of Sturbridge, which may be the shortest decision in history. And it doesn't stand for the ruling that towns can't require a two-thirds vote for site plan review. And it literally says, we're not deciding that. So I don't think we have a legal issue here of being sued under this case, which also is the Appeals Court and not the Supreme Judicial Court. So it doesn't say that, and I don't think we're opening ourselves to legal liability if we stick with the two-thirds site plan review requirement, which, you know, towns, a lot of towns have kept. I'm actually heartened that the Planning Board hasn't had problems with reaching that two-thirds. And I wanted to just talk a bit, because I had heard a year ago, this, when the Planning Board was discussing this question before I was on the Planning Board and I was watching at home. And I heard Michael say, talking about, like, the benefits of having a lot of people agree, even though some people disagree with the decision. And I started to reflect on that, and it, it reminded me of a conversation I had with one of my neighbors who's Quaker, who said, you know, if we're making a decision and it's really close, there's a simple majority, but there's a lot of people in opposition, we would not go forward that action because it would create too much division, and there's something wrong with the decision. There's some problem that needs to be addressed, and they would go back and continue talking or find some other solution. And then also, that comment made me reflect on two votes, you know, where a simple majority won or lost. And in our town, the Wildwood vote was super split, you know, with things going back and forth, and a lot of divisions from that. Brexit is a phenomenal example of a simple majority vote that has almost torn a nation into two. And so I think that there is some benefit, and I think what Christine Brestrop was saying is there is a benefit to having a lot of people on your board behind a decision. And so I would just offer that idea that, no, we don't, I don't think as a planning board of seven, we really want to have three people making a decision on a big, you know, thing like Kendrick Place or One East Pleasant, just because we had trouble, you know, having people there. It's easier to have a quorum because of the Mullins rule. And, you know, apparently, we can just zoom into meetings or be on a phone call now. And so I think that, you know, we could think of every possible problem with quorum, but I don't, I haven't seen it in this group at all, and we have been in reduced circumstances. And so, you know, I, I'm leaning against, I'm leaning towards keeping the two thirds, but definitely not dropping down to three people making a decision. We haven't had that problem. You know, it, this looks like, you know, it's, I just wanted to offer that, those ideas. Thank you. And I, I would support the amendment by Michael Burtwistle.
Steve Schreiber?
So I totally get the idea that the more people you have, the more right the decision seems like it is. Like, there's nothing like a good old nine-zero vote, if it's the Supreme Court. But Amherst Planning Board, during my ten years, some of the most controversial votes that we took were nine-zero. And whether it was a site plan review or a recommendation, recommendation for a zoning bylaw. And so I'm all for consensus, it sounds good. But the way that those nine-zero votes were taken was not the way that we hoped it would be. That it was the, the nine-zero vote was seen as of nine people that had the same mindset. So I completely disagree with that interpretation, but that's how that nine-zero vote was interpreted. We, we have to, we have to face the fact that the consensus is, may not be achievable, that some projects are controversial, that, that a vote is necessary, and that's where democracy steps in. So democracy, again, just to, really assumes that a quorum is fifty percent plus one, and then a positive vote is a fifty percent plus one vote of the quorum. So just another thing is, the, up until recently, the Zoning Board of Appeals was a body of three. So it took three people to approve Aspen Heights. It took three people to approve all of the special permits that we were just talking about. So we have trusted three people to make decisions about very large projects and very controversial decisions here in Amherst. So I'm standing by the, the bylaws, Rick.
Thank you. The only other hand I see up is Janet McGowan again.
So I would like to graciously differ that democracy means fifty percent plus one, because there's tons of situations where a two-thirds vote is required in terms of, you know, you know, decisions about, in, in the town council. You know, you can approve your budget by a simple majority, but not capital expenses. You need, you know, two-thirds majority, buying land or getting rid of land. In the Senate, you know, you can, you have to get a certain amount, in the US Senate, a certain amount of votes in order to confirm Supreme Court. I mean, the body can decide itself what a vote will be, and that's kind of where all the gamesmanship can come. And, you know, let's face it, votes are power. And so I'm kind of making a plea for a more cooperative sort of situation where whenever we make a decision as a body, a lot of us agree. And I think that will create a lot more harmony. I know I have had dissenting votes, votes. There was one situation where my vote could have, on a special permit, could have shot down a project, and Christine Brestrop very delicately just rescheduled for a time when there were more people. And I think that was the correct thing to do, that one person shouldn't have that kind of power. But I think for the functioning of the board, it makes sense that a majority, at least four, are agreeing with a project. And there's a lot of expertise on the board, there's some differences of opinion, that's healthy. But I do think there's a lot to be said for having a real majority of the board behind every decision, if not two thirds. Thanks, that's all.
I see Maria.
So when we're talking about majority and democracy, of course, everyone's for that, but we are talking about numbers here that are units. The, the actual units are really low. We're talking very small, like, one number changes the percentage dramatically. So I think, you know, in the spirit, of course, we all want majority and, and as much consensus, but we're talking about a five-member board possibly. Right now, we're seven, so, you know, the two thirds is five. Again, I'm referring to this really great chart of math. But if we're down to a five-member board, you know, one person missing makes it either an eighty percent or a hundred percent. And site plan review is not supposed to have that kind of a threshold. Of course, you know, hopefully we aren't down to that number, and we don't need to go through every hypothetical situation, but it's just placing that four, I think, suddenly makes site plan review a different animal. And that's not what Table Three is about, where all these different uses in different zones have been designated, SPR versus SP. So, I mean, because we're dealing with literally, like, one person missing, makes the whole sort of requirement of a difference between site plan review and special permit, a completely different relationship. I, I think it's, yeah, and, and again, I'm just gonna commit to that, yeah, the majority, because we're dealing with such low numbers here, such small units.
I recognize Doug.
Yeah, I've obviously not been on the board for very long and haven't seen any meetings where we dropped below maybe six people. In at least a couple of those meetings, I was not allowed to vote because I was new and I had not, could not comply with the Mullins law. So we definitely were down a couple of times there. I, I think when you sign up to be on a board, you take on an obligation to show up. And if, if you're particularly worried about a project that's coming up and having only three people decide, then you need to figure out how to get there. So I basically support the language as written and hope that if people are concerned, they will make sure that as board members, they show up. Thank you.
Steve Schreiber?
So among the hypotheticals is the changing of the board, so the Planning Board. So this is the time of year where there's normally some transition of the Planning Board. So that's another place where you have quorum problems. And actually Doug kind of referred to that circumstance. So the natural place where the Planning Board changes is at the end of June. And so you can't, obviously, if you, if you're replaced, then you can't continue on a hearing. But developer, development doesn't have that same schedule as the Planning Board change. So that was one other thing I forgot to mention is to account for that.
Thank you. Jack?
I move we close the hearing.
Okay, is there a second to that? I see Doug's hand. Is, I got a second. So at this time, we can move to close the public hearing. Mandy, if you can just confirm that we're closing it for both the CRC and the Planning Board?
That's what I was gonna do. This is a motion to close the joint hearing of both committees. So I think our, our plan is to try and streamline this, and so it will be one vote recorded. And, and we'll go from there, I think. Right, Christine?
Okay, that sounds good. Should I do a roll call and then you can do yours?
Sure.
Okay. Michael Burtwistle? Michael Burtwistle?
Yes, can you hear me?
Now I do. That's a, yeah, okay, yes, close the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes. And Maria?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And myself, Christine, yes.
And Mandy is a yes. Evan Ross?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Yes.
And Shalini Baumellem?
Yes.
I think Christine unanimous from both bodies, so twelve zero.
Okay, so the public hearing is now closed. I see no hands up right now, but just in regards to motion, I'm under the understanding we'll probably do two different motions, one for Planning Board and one for CRC. Planning Board, I think I should go first, and then, and then CRC. David, I see a hand up.
Well, thank you.
And I see your hand.
Oh, yeah, and, and thank, thank you for recognizing me. So I understand that the public hearing is closed. It's now a discussion among the joint committees. Is that correct?
There can be more discussion, and each of the committees will be making a motion.
Okay, okay, I've got something to say.
Okay, you got, you got the floor.
I, I, I support, I support this revision. And I agree with, I believe it was Mandy who said earlier, echoing a couple of other comments, that, shoot, I lost it. echoing a couple of other comments, that, shoot, I lost it, where I wrote my notes. But that zoning bylaw needs update. It needs broad updating. And that's gonna, that, we need, the town will need help for that. I submit that that's his town, a town council initiative down the road, once the plague has passed us a little bit. However, I want to point out some, some concerns I have with the, the matter, the issue. While I agree, I think that the site plan review voting requirement for the planning board should be lower to a majority of the planning board members present. I think in order to distinguish between the burden that an applicant has coming before the body for a planning, a site plan review versus a higher burden, a higher threshold to meet for a special permit, things get, once you start pulling at threads, other threads become weaker and, or become apparent. Because the site plan review is in section, article eleven of the zoning bylaws, as I understand it, any decision of site plan review under section eleven point four one can be appealed by an agreed party within, up within, within thirty days of an issuance of a, a permit by the building commissioner, which is a much longer appeal period than a special permit appeal, as I understand it. I could be mistaken. And I don't think, I think that that needs to be corrected as well. That if a site plan review decision is made and approved, there's a, there should be a limited time, rather than an indefinite time practically, effectively, for appeal. That, that, that's inconsistent. That, that, and, and these things become apparent once you start pulling at the little threads of the different pieces of the zoning bylaw, because they are all interwoven. Or many of them are interwoven in, in places. And, and so, so we need, we need a much bigger bylaw update, which is a lot of work. And there are people who've done that work that I, I believe the town should look to hire in the coming years. That's all. Thank you.
I see no hands up right now. So we either, whoop, I see Janet.
Would this be the time for Michael to make his motion, or did he already make a motion?
He did not. At the time, it was not the appropriate time to make a motion. If he wanted to make the motion, he could now. Or someone else can. I see, whoop, hold on, hands. Joe, Michael. Gonna just, Andy, Joe, I just want to say, do you have a protocol issue, or is it?
I was gonna say, with a recommendation, if, if the motion is made, I think it would be to recommend, you know, I think, I think the, a, a motion from the planning board is to recommend or not recommend the council amend. And so if Michael wants to make his motion, I think it would be to recommend that the presented bylaw be amended to read whatever, or to add that clause in prior to the council adopting it, or adopt the proposed amendment with an additional amendment, or something like that.
That's how I saw it, adopting the existing, what we have as the order, and then adding what he wants to it. And that would be the motion. Okay, thank you.
Recommend that adoption with that addition.
Hopefully that makes sense to you, Michael. I'll call on Michael.
Actually, that doesn't make sense. It seems to me that what we need to do is we need to put the motion on the floor of the order as, as it's been written. And then I would, I would move to amend that, or that motion that's on the floor.
We can do it that way too, because you're right. If you pitch it, then we have to go through the whole process and it, yeah, okay. So, uh, so I'm gonna put Michael's hand down. So is there a planning board member who is ready to make a motion?
You want to read a potential motion, Christine?
I can read that. Here's one. I'll read, what about to recommend that the town council amend zoning bylaw eleven point two five zero, planning board decision to delete the phrase, quote, "at least two thirds, but not fewer than five," end quote, and replace it with words, quote, "a majority." So that section eleven point two five reads, "The concurring vote of a majority of the members of the planning, oh, oh, sorry, of the board participating and voting shall be required for any decision on a site plan application, abstaining members being considered not to be voting." That would be a motion. Jack, I see your hand. Jack? Sorry, I, my thing was covering, so I'll go with David, sorry. I'm sorry, and then Jack, I'm sorry. My little lower hand thing, it's, sorry, Zoom issue. David, I recognize you, Ben Jack.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion that you just read, Christine.
Okay, Jack?
A second.
Okay. So now we have a motion on the table, and I will look to see for hands for comments or discussion. This is the planning board motion right now, and then after CRC will do theirs. I recognize, or just, Michael Burtwhistle?
Yes. I move to substitute the phrase, to reinstate, I move to reinstate the phrase, "but not fewer than," and substitute for parentheses for current five.
Okay, are there any other board members, planning board members, who would also like that change to be made in the motion? I recognize Janet.
I'm second the amendment, if I need to.
So, Mandy, I'm, we're stepping into town council land here. So I might, how do I handle that now?
I think what you do is vote on that amendment first to see if the planning board would like to modify the original motion made to make the changes Michael just did. And if that mo, if that motion to amend receives a majority, the changes on the planning board mo, on that are added into the planning board motion.
Thank you. So I will now take a roll call. We have an existing motion, and Michael has made an amendment to it, and Janet has seconded it. And I'll do a roll call whether you're just in favor of the amendment, yes or no, and then we'll go from there. So.
Isn't it appropriate to have some discussion at this point of the amendment?
That's true, that's true. Thank you. Sorry, I'm so into that. So first, first I'm gonna put down Janet and Michael at this point. So they have their amendment. Are there any board members who would like to speak to this right now? I'm only seeing Michael's hand. Is there anyone who has a question on the amendment who would like to share in the?
David keeps seeming to raise his hand in video.
Raise his physical hand.
Oh, David.
David?
Oh, I'm, I'm not muted, shoot. And I'm on video too.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I was equivocating, I'm sorry. The, I, I think if we're building, if we're building this on a scenario, on the hypothetical, that, that it's possible that there is a quorum of a planning board mem, of meeting called with four members present, and that three of them vote positive, I think, I find that highly unlikely. And, and, but, deferring to kind of the, the board members and Chris Brestrop's experience, I think that, that I would, I would, while I support the simple majority, I would also support the amended language. That's all.
Any other members who? Okay, I don't, Michael, I'll go back to you.
Thank you. I, I don't think it's so much a question of, of of what we can expect to happen. I think that over the last three or four years, the planning board, whether nine people or seven people, has essentially all been there all the time. There's been an occasional absence, and there's been an occasional recusal. So I think the hypotheticals of being down to a three person vote is, is extremely unlikely. I do think, though, that the possibility of a five person vote is a little more likely. Again, not terribly likely, but a certain, a reasonable possibility. And a five person vote with a resulting three person, three to two vote is, gets at the, at the issue that Chris Brestrop was talking about a little while ago. I, I think she has been in this business a lot longer than any of us have. And I, I think the sensibility that she was expressing about, which is, which I interpret to have been about the need for a, a, I can't use the word consensus, because it wouldn't be a true consensus. Consensus is, is in the Quaker meeting tradition. Everybody ultimately agrees to agree, whether they really agree or not. That's not what, that's not what this is. This is asking for a reasonable, but not absolute, a reasonable level of agreement on an issue that will ultimately, or that may ultimately significantly affect the overall feel of what the town is like. I think if you want, if you really, no, that's, that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Steve Schreiber.
So we have to look no further than the Amherst Fields, Amherst College Fields project that was fairly recent. Because I believe that there were two abutters within, a butters or butters, two butters within three hundred feet on that project on the planning board, and there was one absent. So immediately you're down to four people on the planning board. So basically, the two abutters, two abutters had to get a, as far as I remember, they had to sign something to, I don't remember what the process was. But these, these cases of conflict, conflict of interest come up, you know, much more often than you would think in the small town.
Maria?
Another point I want to bring out was one, I think Steve actually raised was, you know, the ZBA is three members. Three members voting and deliberating with four or five people present is not an unusual way to get things approved. So I think being afraid of the three is coming from a stranger place. That's all I have to say.
Janet?
Um, I just wanted to, to say is, you know, the ZBA, it's three of three. It's a hundred percent. And one member can, you know, torpedo a project. And so there, you know, the ZBA has been able to reach that hundred percent voting threshold. The other two members are sort of associates, or kind of in the waiting, in the wings if they're needed because of a quorum issue. I think, I just wanted to get back to the, that point, and also to Michael's first point, which is, you know, we've been able to reach two thirds the planning board for a long time. And so, you know, you know, we're moving away from two thirds to a simple majority of, to three votes. I don't even know why. I don't even know really what the problem is. Has, this hasn't been a problem in the past. And so, you know, we seem to be moving to fewer and few people on a yay vote, when it hasn't been a problem reaching two thirds for site plan review. So I just want to put that context in here. It just does, I don't really understand what the problem we're trying to solve, other than a little bit of a smaller board. But at least having four people vote is more like the way it's been, and it's always been successful that way. And so it's, it's been a working, two thirds for site plan review has worked for decades. Other towns do it. We're dropping below two thirds, and now we're dropping below an actual majority. And I don't know why, and I don't know what the reasons would be. So I would just recommend that at least we stay at a majority of the, you know, the entire planning board. Thank you.
Shalini?
Yeah, this might help. I'm looking at mass.gov under smart, smart growth. And in that, they recommend that, that site plan review should be, not should be, they say many communities and adopting smart growth are moving towards, or have simple majority. But they also have this idea of major and minor site plan review. And that might be something we could consider, because they say for minor site plan reviews, because we're looking to a smart growth and zoning bylaws that expedite processes and not treat everything. And then bringing in the quicker idea is like, yeah, when things are really major and substantial, we want to include more people. But maybe for things that are not that great, can we move faster with those things? Just throwing that idea. But it does say that site plan review is typically simple majority. Approval of site is usually a simple majority vote of the lead reviewing agency.
Thanks. I, I just want to remind everyone of what I said in the beginning about site plan review, that it's about refining the details. It's about aesthetics and environmental impacts and getting the owner, builder, developer to do due diligence at addressing those issues before starting as much as possible. It's, it's not about prohibition. So the truth is, all those buildings that have been built so far, even with this restrictive two thirds, they were all approved, and they all happened, because it's not about not approving them. It's about making them the best they can be. So, yes, you know, some people are saying, why are we going with this lower number? Well, my reason for it is because it sends a message out to the world that we are trying to do smart growth. And we do care about our economic development. And now in the time of COVID, I feel even more strongly about this. When I contemplate where we might be this time next year, and the empty shops and the abandoned downtown that we might be dealing with, we want to be attractive. And I want people to come and risk their money and their time and effort to reestablish here in Amherst. And the ones that have survived this, to be able to be encouraged that maybe they can improve their building or their site without the fear of over complication of Amherst. So that's why I'm not concerned. I, of course, want as many people on the planning board to vote something in approval. The ideal is seven. That looks wonderful. And we can still have that, but it's not going to change whether or not the building is built. We're just mostly trying to change it to make it the best it can be. And my last statement is, what I really think the system needs is design guidelines, you know, column, form based owning. You know, that's what is needed. And when I did my research, and more and more towns are even going just to administrative SPR review, they're doing that because, they've told me time and time again, because they have good, strong design guidelines. And that helps set a framework for developers to come in and already be trying to achieve. So I do think, you know, this is one layer, but we're identifying a lot of issues that need to be addressed in the near future, fixing and improving a lot of our zoning bylaws and getting design guidelines. So, I just, thank you. I see David and then Jack. Or not David, I'll go with Jack.
David, unmute?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the unmute part. I'd like to, I'd like to move to a vote. I, I, but I have a question before I do. I believe the first motion to vote on is Michael's proposed revision. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I'd like to move to vote on Michael's proposed revision to include, but not fewer than four.
Okay.
Christine?
Yes, yes.
Will require, it, it's not debate, if it gets a second, it's not debatable. And it goes directly to, the motion to call the question goes directly to your board and requires a two thirds vote of the board to stop debate.
What happens if there's not a second?
Then the motion fails, so.
So we continue talking.
And you just continue talking.
So David's just asking.
To call the question.
To call the question.
His motion is to call the question, yes.
And I'm seeing if there's, is there a second to that, to call the question?
A second.
Okay, Jack, so at this point, we Okay, Jack, so at this point, we, I will do, um, a roll call for the motion amendment that Michael has added that is.
No, you're, you're moving, a motion on the call of the question. This is the motion on whether or not.
To continue debate.
Said again.
All call vote will be on whether to continue debate. If you vote yes, you want to.
This is not meaning.
Yes, if you vote yes, you want to finish debate. If you vote no, you want to continue debate.
And if we vote yes, then we, and we have two-thirds, then we vote on the substantive motion of Michael's language.
Okay, and then we vote on the amendment. Okay, so this is just the first part. So I'll go with Michael.
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that's part one. Now we'll move to part two, which is the actual amendment, which is to refresh, it was on the motion to re-put in, but not fewer than, and then add four.
Okay.
So that's what the amendment to the first motion is, and I will take a roll call vote for that. So I'll start with Michael Burtwhistle.
Yes.
Maria?
No.
Jack?
No.
David?
No.
Doug?
Opposed.
Janet?
Yes.
And myself, no. So that's five no, or two yeses, five no, zero abstaining.
That was majority.
Yes, so that motion failed. Um, so we, or the amendment failed, so now we go back to the first motion, which I don't see any hands up right now. We could go to a roll call for that motion. Still don't see any hands. So, um, the mo, do I need to read the motion again, or?
You probably should.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so the motion is to recommend that the town council amend zoning bylaw 11.250. Planning board decision to delete the phrase, quote, "at least two-thirds, but not fewer than five," end quote, and replace the words with, quote, "a majority," end quote, so that the section 11.250 reads, quote, "The concurring vote of a majority of the members of the board participating and voting shall be required for any decision on a site plan application." In parentheses, abstaining members being considered not to be voting, end parentheses, end quote. That's the motion. I will go through a roll call.
Excuse me, who made the motion?
Oh, that was.
I can tell you, hold on.
I think it goes back to me.
David, and then Jack seconded.
Jack seconded, thank you.
Yes. Um, and this is for a recommendation to go to town council, just to be clear on what this motion is. It doesn't actually make it happen. Um, Michael Burtwhistle?
Is there any more discussion?
Well, I, oh, I didn't see any hands until right now, I just, yours. Um, I think we have had discussion, but if, if you have, want more, then.
Well, the, there's been no motion to close debate.
Do we need motion to close debate?
So what I would say is Christine asked if there was more discussion before, so no hands, so she was moving to the vote because she didn't see any hands for more discussion. So when you don't see anyone.
I asked twice.
Directly to it.
Yeah. I asked twice, and I, I, I still see no hands, but I do recognize you, Michael, before I start this, if you have anything else you want to say.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I, I do, and I, I'm surprised that you're moving immediately to a vote on this, because we had a discussion of the amendment. Now we need to have a discussion of the motion, it seems to me.
Feel free, the hand, your hand is up, so.
Well, thank you. Uh, I agree with a number of people who said, that, that a zoning bylaw revision of major proportions is what's needed. Uh, and I, I think that's absolutely true. I think that's a long process. And I don't know how long, but it's, it's going to take a while. Whether or not we should remain with the existing bylaw, which says two-thirds, but not fewer than five, uh, as opposed to changing it to what the current proposal is, is, um, is a different question. I, I think maybe we'd be better off staying with what we have and working on changing the bylaw. It, to the level that many people are suggesting it needs to be. And I would certainly support that. As it, as it, as it is now, I don't think that this, this bylaw change is either a good idea or, uh, or necessary at this point. And I guess that's about all I needed to say.
Um, I recognize Jack.
Or? We're an hour and a half into this. I, I've heard a lot of recycling of ideas and things like that, so I'm going to call the question.
Okay, and I see no more hands up. So I will go for a roll call on, um.
You need a second?
I do see, yeah, I see Doug. Yep, okay, great.
Second to call a question?
Okay, call the question, there's a second.
But now do we, now we need the, the roll call, the two-thirds to call the question again.
That's right.
This is a new motion, and then, once we get that, then we can maybe go on to the, the, the actual vote. But, but we need, we need two votes now.
Okay.
Not being a Robert's kind of guy like me, but, but.
No, this is, this is like, I was never a town meeting member. This is, um, so this first roll call is just for calling the question.
Right.
Whether we should then move to the motion. So, I mean, it's been seconded by Doug, so I'll go through the roll call again. Michael Burtwhistle?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Janet?
Yeah.
And myself, Christine, yes. Okay, so now we will move to the motion. Which, uh, you can see, it's actually up on the board too, so. So I will call the, um, roll call again, this time it's for the motion. Michael Burtwhistle?
No.
Maria?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Janet?
No.
And myself, Christine Grammellin, yes.
You got frozen in the middle of that, Christine?
Did I? Yes.
Sound got frozen. Can you go through that again?
Um, Michael, sorry, we'll go through it again. Michael?
Oh, uh, uh, no.
And Maria?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
David?
I'm miming yes.
Okay, Doug?
Yes.
And Janet?
No.
Okay, and myself, Christine, yes. So, uh, Chris, I hope you heard, I heard five to zero.
Five to zero. Thank you.
So the planning board, we're done with ours. At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mandy Jo, because it will be easier for her to, um, call on her own people.
Thank you. Um, I am not, at this point, seeing any hands for continued discussion. If there's no desire for continued discussion before a motion, I do see Sarah. Sarah?
So I'm just going to say that I, I think that I would bring up that amendment again, to have no fewer than four. And I'd like to explain why I feel that way. And I think that I always try to fall on the side of consistency. And one of the things that as a new town council, we have continually been told is that, taking guidance from staff that have been here for a long time and have seen how things work, and to see how things work with the public, is something that we should pay attention to. And the fact that Chris has been here in Amherst, working in the planning department for so very long, the fact that she said that she, at this time, would feel most comfortable with the, the language of no fewer than four, I would like to respect that, because I think that she's sort of seen how things go and the fallout of that. That being said, I also really hear a lot of the voices from the planning board. And I think that the planning board now is seven people. And to think that you, that you would need three is, is like the, the biggest sometimes that you can get for a majority out of seven. I think that speaks to the fact that what, what has been brought up is that maybe something's broken with the number of people, or maybe of the process, which is something CRC is looking into. And also, you know, maybe we, I think that we do need to look at the zoning bylaws and maybe overhaul them. But I just think that dropping from four out of seven to three out of seven, without having looked at what might be broken about the planning board and also about the zoning bylaws, I don't, I think that that would not be as safe. And I, I'm just, I feel like I'm just trying to listen to what Christine has said, and also to the underlying problems that I think that the planning board is feeling about their own job. And the fact that a lot of our planning board is also moving on, or hasn't stayed, makes me think that there's something that they need to feel, um, more ease in their job. So that's, that's all.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, I, I just want to ask if you'd be okay with the motion as the planning board passed it being made, and then the motion as Michael made, that you making that as a motion to amend just for cleanness sake? And, and I see a nodding as, as to that as a process.
Yes, I think that makes more sense, yeah.
So I will, I, if, if I don't see any other hands, I will move to making that motion myself, the, the original main motion. Um, and then I'll look for a second, and then I will, I will then immediately go to reading the amendment, because I'm guessing you don't have it in front of you that, that Michael made. So I will read it for you to be able to make that motion as a so moved, and then seek a second for that. Okay, Sarah? So the motion that I'm going to make, I move to recommend that the town council amend zoning bylaw 11.250. Planning board decision to delete the phrase, quote, "at least two-thirds, but not fewer than five," end quote, and replace it with the words "a majority," so that the section 11.250 reads, "The concurring vote of a majority of the members of the board participating and voting shall be required for any decision on a site plan application, abstaining members being considered not to be voting," end quote. The motion is by me. Do I hear a second? Are my members around?
Second.
Shalini, seconds. And, and now we will move to a motion to amend. Um, I will look for a motion to amend, to reinstate the phrase, quote, "but not fewer than," end quote, and substitute the word, quote, "for," end quote, for the current word "five." Do I hear that motion? Sarah?
I saw move.
And is there a second? So for the purposes of having a vote, I will make the second. Okay, since I was not seeing anyone else, um, do we have any discussion on it? Sarah?
Can't hear you.
That was a legacy hand, and I apologize for it. I'm sorry.
We have those problems sometimes, don't we? Shalini?
Oh, could, could Chris speak a little more to what were the benefits of making it four, for something like site plan review? And what were you, what would be the consequence, like what were you, what was going on in your mind when you proposed the minimum of four? Thank you.
So I think, you know, partly it is, um, the public's confidence in the planning board and the planning department. I feel like, um, the more planning board members who vote in the affirmative for something, the more, um, confidence the public has that the planning board did the right thing. I feel like if, if I saw a vote in the, um, Daily Hampshire Gazette that the planning board had voted to approve One East Pleasant Street on a vote of three members positive, one member negative, I would not feel confident about that vote. I would want to see a majority of the planning board voting for something that's that big. Um, and the majority would be four. So that's, that is, um, in my mind about, uh, about why we would do this. I really feel like, um, it's, a vote of three out of seven just doesn't really stand up in my mind as something that the public is going to feel good about.
Shalini, do you have any follow-up?
I'm thinking about it.
Okay, so I will go to Steve and then come back to you if you, if you desire. Steve?
So the vote that speaks to me is of five out of seven planning board members had just voted in support of having three members, minimum of three members approve this. So that speaks volumes to me. If this were a site plan review, it would have passed. If it were a special permit, it would have passed. So that's a, basically a super majority. And so with all due respect to, um, with due respect to that process, I respect the vote of the planning board.
Shalini? Shalini?
Oh, I'm good. I appreciate Steve's response. That clarifies something for me, so I'm good.
Okay, um, and I, I do want to point out one thing that I think is accurate, before we might move to a vote, that the buildings that Chris Brestrop originally indicated she would be concerned about, One East Pleasant, Kendrick Place, I think, or some of these other ones that were mixed-use buildings, almost all of them had special permits attached to them, I believe. And that special permit still requires two-thirds, I believe. Um, so even if the site plan would be, if only five members are voting, a required three, the special permit that goes along with that site plan review would require four. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the case. And I'm not hearing anyone correct me. I think I saw a nodding from Steve, the council's resident expert in zoning.
I think seven times point six-six is.
No, I was saying if five were voting, it would be three for the site plan review if we don't do this amendment, but it would be four for the special permit attached to that same application.
I think you'd need five for the special permit.
Okay, you'd, you'd need even more, five?
Seven.
Okay. Oh, because it's based on seven, not the number voting, okay.
It's two-thirds of the minimum of five.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So it would still need five, even if the other one needs three.
That's right.
Any more discussion on this motion to amend? Seeing none, I will take a roll call. I think we are down to Evan starting first.
Clarification.
For Shalini.
Sorry, I just want to clarify what we are voting on. This is on Sarah's modification.
This is the motion to amend, to add back in the phrase, but not fewer than, and then it would be four.
Got it, okay.
So Evan?
Yeah.
Um, Steve?
No.
Sarah?
Yes.
Uh, Shalini?
No.
And Mandy is a no, that is a one to four vote, so that motion to amend fails. Any other discussion on the main motion?
I'm sorry, Mandy, can I interrupt you?
Oh, sure.
I didn't catch, I could not understand what Evan said. I'm very sorry.
So Evan was a no.
No.
So Sarah voted yes, and the other four members voted no. Thank you for asking for that clarification. Um, I am seeing no more discussion on the main motion, so I will move to a vote on that, which is a vote to recommend the language that is on the screen unchanged at this point, the, the proposed language, because the motion to amend failed. Uh, we are starting with Steve.
Yes.
And then we go to Sarah?
No.
Uh, Shalini?
Yes.
Mandy is a yes, and Evan?
Yes.
And that is a four to one vote, so that motion to recommend passes. At this time, I will say the CRC has no more items on its agenda, so I give the rest of the meeting over to Christine for the rest of the planning board members' agenda. Thank you for hosting us, for joining us. Thank you for hosting us for a joint meeting and I am adjourning the meeting of the Community Resources Committee at eight twenty-three P M.
Thank you, CRC.
Thank you. Good to be here with y'all.
Thank you. I know you guys had a lot of meetings already hours in this week, so thank.
Thank you.
Good night.
Um, at this time, I have eight twenty-three. Um, whoops. So how about we use that slide, Pam? And I'll announce to everyone that we'll take a five minute break. Um, if people need to go and, and we'll come back here at eight twenty-eight and we'll resume with item, uh, four. The review and recommendations to ZBA on Valley Community Development Corp., 132 North Hampton Road. So I'll see everybody in five minutes. Thank you, CRC.
Okay.
All right, so I'll at least call the meeting back in. We took a be, a brief break. Um, so I'm just gonna say now we're moving on to, uh, item four, review and recommendations to ZBA. ZBA F Y twenty twenty dash thirty-nine, Valley Community Development Corp., 132 North Hampton Road. Request for a comprehensive permit under NGL Chapter forty B to construct a new two and a half story residential multifamily building containing twenty-eight small studio apartments and related common areas on an approximate point eight eight acre property located at 132 North Hampton Road, map fourteen C parcel eight, general residence RG and educational ED zoning districts. Okay. Welcome. Um, I, I think we have a few presenters. If you want to introduce yourselves, um, welcome. We're glad you're here. Um, and then after, uh, I just want to know, do you want questions at the end? Or?
Yep. So, uh, this is Laura Baker. I'm the real estate project manager for Valley Community Development Corporation. Uh, Rachel, can you introduce yourself too?
Sure, uh, this is Rachel Leffler. I'm a principal landscape architect at Berkshire Design Group.
And Tom?
Uh, yeah, hi, Tom Chalmers, Austin Design Architect.
I am, I, whatever the committee prefers. Uh, if you want me to run through the full presentation and hold questions till the end, that's fine. If you want to call out questions as we go along, that's fine too. Uh, it might be a little easier that way because sometimes they have to do with a particular slide. And once we've passed that slide, we have to go back and find it. So I guess that's my suggestion.
Okay, I, and approximately how long is your, uh, presentation?
It depends how many questions you have. I can get through it in about twenty minutes. Um, I, I'd like to suggest that I move briskly, um, because you've had a long discussion already and we have been to the planning board prior for this project and already given a presentation. So I think of this more as an update. But let's just launch in and see how it goes.
So if I see hands raised during your presentation, I will let, I'll say there's a hand raised and it will only be at this point, members. Um, and before you start, I just, Jack Jemcik, you have your hand up. Is there something you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to say I, um, I've said this before. I did, you know, a project, you know, a year or two prior regarding this site. But it's a recommendation and, um, you know, I have no vested interest in this project uh, at this time and just want to let that be said.
Thank you for your disclosure, Jack. That's good. Yes. Um, sounds like it was in the past, so, okay, great. And it's just recommendations today, so, and, um, at this point now, I'll turn it back to, um,
Thank you.
I was gonna say Laura, everyone's saying Laura, but I'm like, Ms. Baker. So welcome back.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having us. So what is noteworthy on this first slide is, um, if you want to know even more than you're going to learn tonight, um, there is a wealth of information. There is a town webpage specific to this project with, uh, a lot of material. Um, just because of the planning board, we wanted to make sure that you noted, um, that the proposed project is consistent with other plant, planned documents, planning documents in the town of Amherst. Um, I tend to put a lot of writing on my slides so we can send them around after because you may not have a chance to read everything that's on here as we go. But just noting that this need for these very small, um, single person units and units for homeless persons has been identified, um, through the years in a number of different Amherst town planning documents. Um, and there is a long history of Amherst's efforts as a municipality um, and in its departments trying to foster, um, especially housing for homeless individuals. Going back to two thousand and eight, when Amherst issued an RFP to study the creation of these kind of units, Valley, uh, conducted a study and actually made an offer at that time on a property close to town. And the property owner refused the offer and wanted considerably more. Um, and so that just fell through. Um, more recently, there was a town forum on homelessness in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, the town of planning department did a tour with a number of developers trying to kind of uh, spur some interest in developing this kind of housing. And then ultimately the town awarded Valley a fifty thousand dollar planning grant to try to locate a site. Uh, there were several townwide forums on affordable housing with highlights on this topic. Uh, and then the zoning subcommittee and planning board held hearings to discuss a zoning amendment to facilitate single person occupancy housing development. Uh, that was approved at the Springtown meeting in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, we looked at, um, multiple sites, probably about two dozen, uh, during two thousand and eighteen and eventually acquired 132 North Hampton Road in January of two thousand and nineteen. Um, we sought funding from the town. So the Amherst, uh, CDBG Advisory Committee held hearings, uh, recommended to a two hundred thousand dollar CDBG planning grant. And then ultimately the CPA recommended a five hundred thousand dollar grant for project implementation. Um, at that point, there was pretty lively, um, local debate. Uh, there were a number of community events. There was an open town meeting of residents with more than eighty people there. There are multiple letters and newspaper articles written. And following that kind of period of intense activity, a town council approved the CPA recommendation, uh, by a vote of eleven in favor and one abstention. Um, this year, the town council provided a letter of support for our project eligibility letter to the state. Uh, three town councillors came to the state site visit. Um, and again, multiple groups and community letters were submitted, both pro and con, um, during a thirty day public comment. Um, the level of community participation, I think, has been pretty high. Um, we, Valley has had public meetings with these various municipal boards. Um, in addition, we've met with, uh, butters and neighbors. Uh, we've met with a number of local groups. Uh, and I, I won't read them all, but we, we've been door knocking. Um, we've been in consultation a lot with the planning and zoning department, but also with other, uh, town departments, you know, DPW, fire department, uh, things like that. Um, the methods that we've used to inform the community, uh, have been this wonderful webpage that the town planning staff has set up. Public meetings, over thirty articles, opinions and letters that were published in local newspapers. We also did radio interviews. Um, and we have more than sixty letters and written comments, both again pro and con, uh, that have been submitted. Uh, and dozens of speakers, again, pro and con at public meetings. Uh, and we have PowerPoint presentations that are on the town website prepared by neighbors and butters, um, as well as by Valley. Um, people are hopefully familiar at this point with the site. Uh, it's here in Lake Green. Uh, it's on North Hampton Road. It's approximately halfway between University Drive and up here at the town center. Directly adjacent to the Conway Field House and Pratt Athletic Field. Uh, this is how we look at the site and its benefits. Uh, it's four tenths of a mile from the town center and the closest bus stop. Six tenths of a mile from downhill to the major shopping centers. And walking distance to multiple service providers, including the community health center, uh, at the Bang Center. It's on a major road. It's connected to public water and sewer. It's a, just under an acre lot. It's cleared and relatively level for North Hampton Road. Uh, butters are primarily residential, both single family and multifamily, uh, both owner occupied and rental. Uh, it's right at the junction of three zoning districts, E D, R G and R N. And for most of our planning, we thought we were entirely in R G, but there's a little tiny sliver that's in E D uh, that we think was just kind of a mapping overlay glitch that happened at some point in time. There are several other dense housing uses nearby, some condos, residence halls and, uh, senior housing development. Um, what is proposed? Our twenty-eight small studio apartments designed for single adults. Uh, each apartment includes a bathroom and a kitchenette. Common areas include, uh, central kind of common living and dining area, multi-use room, a laundry, outdoor patio and some gardening space. Uh, we're providing two onsite offices, one for property management and one for resident services coordinator. Uh, it is a two and a half story building. Uh, the half story is, uh, a full living level, but it's partly below grade. Uh, twenty-eight units. Two of the twenty-eight units are fully handicapped accessible. Uh, the average unit's, unit size is two hundred and thirty-five gross square feet and the accessible units are significantly larger. All in the building is just under twelve thousand gross square feet. Uh, the income restrictions, uh, we're attempting to have a number of tiers of, of income levels so that this is a mixed income property. Um, one of the main incentives obviously was to provide, uh, units that have a homeless preference for folks who are very low income, thirty percent of the area median income, and would have a project based rental subsidy. So people who live there pay approximately thirty percent of their income for rent. Two units that would have a preference for clients of the Department of Mental Health, again with a, a subsidy. Um, eight units restricted to people fifty percent of the area median income or less with a fixed rent. Um, and eight studios for people eighty percent AMI or less with a fixed rent. Um, and these rents include all of the utilities, uh, heating, cooling, hot water, electric. Uh, these are the current income restrictions, thirty percent AMI, just under eighteen thousand, fifty percent, just under thirty thousand, eighty percent, just under forty-eight thousand. This is what those people earning those amounts can afford if they paid thirty-two percent of their income for their, uh, rent and utilities. Um, and so this is our, um, look at affordability ranges for these different units. Uh, the development, there's been a lot of discussion about kind of who is homeless um, and what are their characteristics? Um, so the development can house, but is not limited to people who are chronically homeless, which is defined as people who have long-term or repeated homelessness coupled with serious mental illness, substance use disorder or disability. Nationally, about twenty-four percent of homeless persons meet this definition. Um, the overall definition for someone to be homeless is much broader. Um, it could be someone who's doubled up, someone living in substandard housing, someone who has a domestic violence in their current residence, someone who's at risk of homelessness because they're paying more than thirty percent of their income for rent and a variety of other ways that someone might be defined as a homeless individual. This is supportive housing. And so, uh, we've spent a lot of time, uh, developing a supportive services plan. That draft plan is available on the town's website. Um, these are just some highlights of it. Uh, we will provide an onsite resident services coordinator, uh, twenty-seven and a half to thirty hours per week. And their primary function is to help tenants connect with community based services, uh, to coordinate onsite functions for tenants, uh, to coordinate and/or provide transportation. Property management will have an onsite presence about twenty hours a week. They have kind of a different, um, objective, uh, there to maintain the property, collect rents, enforce the terms of the lease. We have memorandums of understanding with several other community agencies in place that specialize in serving low income and homeless persons. Uh, Department of Mental Health will provide kind of comprehensive wraparound services for any clients that they refer. So homeless tenants, uh, will be referred, uh, into the property from local agencies and those agencies need to commit to provide these kind of transition services for typically the first nine to twelve months of tenancy. And then as they withdraw from that level, high level of service, they will be connecting tenants with ongoing community based, uh, services. Uh, the ZBA hearing schedule is here. The opening hearing is, uh, next week on Thursday, June twenty-fifth at six, also on Zoom. And the continued hearing date has already been set for a week later. You are all, of course, welcome to join. Um, we brought some information about a comparable project that is just now finishing construction. It's in North Hampton at eighty-two Bridge Street. Uh, like the Amherst project, it's located on Route Nine, walking distance to downtown. Uh, it's a significantly smaller parcel. It's less than half an acre. Uh, it's a historic house that's being renovated with a large new addition. Uh, it's converting from fifteen bedroom lodging house to thirty-one studio apartments. Uh, it has less onsite parking than was being proposed in Amherst. It has fourteen parking spaces or point four five spaces per unit. Uh, the apartments are similar in size and scale. Uh, it will house homeless persons, uh, Department of Mental Health clients and other low income individuals. And there's less onsite staffing, so two days a week of property management, about fifteen hours a week of resident services coordinator. Uh, we held a lottery for, uh, tenants who were interested in moving to this property in January of two thousand and twenty. We had two hundred and fifty qualified applicants apply and of these, a hundred and fifty-two reported that they were homeless. Um, this property, it's called Sergeant House, is due to complete construction within the next week or two and lease up to tenants beginning the end of June. Uh, the tenant profile at that property is somewhat similar, although it's a little more slanted toward the very low income end of the spectrum. Um, and the highest income group is sixty percent AMI rather than eighty percent AMI. You may have driven by the site. I hope that you have and I hope that you will, um, because it's very beautiful. Uh, it's a historic eighteen twenty building, uh, that was basically taken down to the bare bones and is being lovingly restored. Um, and then it has a more contemporary style addition on the back. That's the view from the back. This is the view looking at the front of the building. It's just two doors down from historic North Hampton and it is in a national register historic district. This is the interior of some of the units, um, that are getting finished up at that building just to give people a sense of what a unit might look like. Um, it's a little hard to tell from photos how big they are. Um, but this is a typical kind of kitchenette, just so someone might see what that looks like. Um, it's a, it's a full size but small refrigerator. It's a twenty-four inch range oven. It's a microwave. It's a sink, you know, it's some counter space and some, a little bit of cupboard storage. So it's kind of all the basics and it's small, but it's, it's quite functional. So these are excerpts from the plans that we've submitted for the zoning permit. There is within our zoning application, uh, several pages of lists for zoning waivers, many of which are very kind of, um, I would say technical in nature. Uh, the ones that I listed here, I'm calling them highlights, are the ones that I think of as being a little more substantive. If you want to see the complete list, um, it is available online. So, uh, the number of units in this building is twenty-eight, whereas the apartment building limit is twenty-four. Uh, the density of units per lot area is higher than would be allowed normally. Uh, the parking is point five seven spaces per unit, sixteen spaces total. Uh, the maximum lot coverage for, uh, all pervious and impervious surfaces uh, is forty-five percent as opposed to the, the norm of forty percent. And we're asking that as part of the comprehensive permit process, the ZBA brings in and encompasses other town permits. And here are a few examples of those kinds of other permits. And so the ZBA is kind of the funnel and they consult out with the various boards. So the style of the building, um, we would call traditional slash Victorian. Um, the inspiration for it was we looked at a variety of residence, kind of dorm, older residence halls on the Amherst and Smith College campuses. Um, these are some three D renderings of the building. Uh, this is looking, this is the driveway area. Um, and this is the facade that would be facing North Hampton Road. Um, this is the facade that would be facing the Conway Field House. No, sorry. This is the rear of the building, facing the track. And this is the side of the building that would be facing the Conway Field House. When we came to the, uh, planning board in, I believe it was February, there was a suggestion that we prepare some graphic to try to illustrate the size and scale and massing of the proposed billing, building as proportionate to its neighbors. So here we are, this is North Hampton Road going to Hadley, going to Amherst. This is one thirty-two. So this is what you would see if you were standing here on the sidewalk looking across North Hampton Road at the new building. This is what you would see if you were standing directly in front of it. And we did this, the architects did this with a variety of neighboring buildings. Now, one thing that you'll notice is the building looks teeny and it's partly because it's set so far back on the lot. It's about a hundred feet back on the lot. Um, so it does, but it is a neighbor to, um, a larger structure. So it does, but it is a neighbor to a larger structure, which is the Conway Field House. As well as a slightly smaller structure, which is this Victorian house here. I think I'm going to hand it to Rachel to talk you through just the basic elements of the proposed site plan. You there, Rachel?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can, and I'll point for you if you want.
Okay, great. One thing that we wanted to take into consideration is improving, so the site had an existing house on it. And the house was really, really tucked up close back to the, to the field. And it was, it didn't meet the setback requirements. And we also were taking in consideration the massing of, of the building in relationship to other yards along Northampton Road. And we felt that if we, if we inch it forward into the lot closer to Northampton Road a little bit, we could give a little bit more breathing room between the apartment building and the adjacent uses of college. We also were taking into consideration accessibility, so early on, many of the discussions were looking at the existing grades onsite and how we could place the finish for of the apartment building. So that we wouldn't need steps into the building, so anyone coming in on a wheelchair or who is mobily challenged would have an easier time getting into the building. So all sidewalks are fully accessible, they're less than 5%, so no railings or landings are needed. We also looked at trying to make sure that any of the service elements were kind of tucked away from visibility from Northampton Road as much as possible. So the units, the HVAC units are tucked away behind the building, massing tucked way out of sight from the Hampton Road. Additionally, the, you know, the dumpster area, which we have capacity for an eight-yard and four-yard dumpster or eight-yard and six-yard dumpster. That is screened with fencing and tucked away in the back of the site. Across the site, there's nine feet of grade change, so coming from Northampton Road, if you're driving up or down. Your sightlines would not encounter the dumpster area, it's only for those driving into the site that would see it. And we placed it in that location, we heard comments from the planning board before. That you may wanted to tuck that somewhere else, but there was a feasibility issue of getting the dumpster truck to pick it up and turn around. So that's where that needs to be. Also back there, we're accommodating things like the storage shed for gardening equipment and some salt. And we're anticipating a need for transfer on site and we're placing it back there as well, so it's not in the, in the streetscape along Northampton Road. In addition, we have some bike storage, covered bike storage in that area. And, and we have, we're also trying to minimize the impact of the parking area onsite and kind of keeping with the residential feel of the neighborhood. So we were using asphalt surfacing because it's fairly durable for half of the spaces and they're full-size spaces. But then the other areas for parking that we don't anticipate having a heavy use, we're using grass covers as an alternative there to soften that. And also areas for, for turning around in the back of the site, we're using that as an alternative to again minimize the impact of paving on the site. We anticipate potential gardening for residents here. There are two garden areas, zones, one to the south and one to the west, as Laura's pointing out now. To take advantage of different lighting conditions for different types of plants. Additionally, on the lower level, so I should mention that as, as someone enters into the apartment building, they enter into a lobby that's at the mid-level. And the building has an elevator and stairs that go up and down. So at the lower level, there, there is more, there's a gathering area and a connection out to a lower level patio. So that patio area is fully accessible from the building also. And that area has seating and screen, evergreen and deciduous planting. This plan has a very high density of planting, which we're really excited about, to help screen this area from the neighbors and make it much more therapeutic for the residents who are there. In addition, this user group has a need, needs a smoking structure, a stofing pavilion. And that is being shown on the site plan, tucked away facing away from the apartment building. With a bench and then more additional screening between it and the apartment building and screening between it and the, and the fieldhouse. Stormwater on site, like we are trying to use low-impact development techniques. So as much as we can, we're trying to get away from piped systems and infrastructure systems. Not only do they own, add cost, but if we can, we like to use lighter methods. So the plan, the majority of the plan, we're using grading to define a detention retention area towards Northampton Road, a subtle depression in, in the front. We're also using a rain garden adjacent to the parking areas to deal with stormwater quality and clean up, clean up any water coming off of the parking area before it goes into that potentially retention basin. Laura, if I have anything else I should mention?
Sure, we're showing these, this main pathway coming in and this main pathway as being in concrete. And then using a permeable kind of, I don't know what it's called, the shredded rubber. Shredded rubber for these pathways. And we've scaled them down a bit to a more residential kind of, you know, scale. People probably know on the planning board that this, there is an existing sidewalk here. It's in kind of rough condition and there is a mast DOT plan to improve sidewalks on both sides of Northampton Road to five feet wide. They're all supposed to be handicapped accessible according to Mast DOT. And there will be two crossings with lights that are planned, one at Orchard Street and one at Hazel Street. So again, we have connectivity into what will be an improved pedestrian access system. I think, I think you did a good job, Rachel, I think I'm gonna go on.
I do see one hand up. Take a question from Maria Chow.
Of course. I'm not a landscape architect, so I don't know what this term means, level spreader, sea? Is that a wall or is that a grade? What is that exactly, that little?
It's a, it's a fancy word for area of riprap that is level, that takes any channelized flow that's coming out of a pipe. And it distributes it evenly across gravity flow across a larger surface, so that you don't have scouring down slope of the pipe.
Okay, so that sort of ski-shaped thing is not a wall or anything?
No, that's like a, that's like riprap.
But it's gonna sit, Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, it, you wouldn't see it as a passerby so much, it's kind of sitting pretty much at grade.
Yeah, yeah.
And then my other question is, maybe this is something more for the architect, but the little condensers for the mini splits right by the smoking pavilion. No, yeah, I was wondering if those could, you know, they can be noisy, they're made pretty well nowadays where they're not super noisy. But if there's just another spot that's not right by where people are relaxing outside, but it's a pretty minor thing, so.
Yeah, we definitely, we may play around with them a little bit, it's always challenging to find a spot, they can't be near windows, they can't be near, you know, it just, it's, it's one of the challenges that we'll struggle with a little bit with a, a building that has peaked roofs. Flat roof buildings, you just throw them on the roof, but we didn't want a flat roof building, so we're trying to find places for them around the site. So this is the elevation that you would see, this is on the driveway side, so you would be coming in as Rachel described on grade into a main lobby area and it's essentially a split level, you know, the lobby's on, on grade and then you have a choice of going up or down stairs or up or down within an elevator. We're trying to pick up some of the traditional cladding materials like the, the fieldstone kind of look facade that is present in the Conway Field House and then a traditional clambered look. This is the side of the building that would be facing Northampton Road and this isn't an exact representation of grade, it's a little more gradual than this, but it is kind of slow sloping across the building that way. And so this is the side that would be facing the, the fieldhouse. Here are the doors that would egress onto that patio space that we looked at. And then this is the back of the building that would be looking toward the track. Tom, maybe I'll let you chime in in terms of, this is a little small to look at, but in terms of the cross-section as well as the roof height.
Sure, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yep. So one of the, one of the features of the building is that you enter into the building at the, at the, along the side, kind of at the midpoint. So when you enter to the building, you're basically in the center horizontally and you can, and it's quick to get to either section of the, to either area for your apartments. And we're doing the same vertically in section, so at the, this here is the covered portico at the entrance and this is at the grade that the driveway is at, basically. And then as you come in, you come in at grade and you have, there's an open stairway and you go either down to the ground floor level or up to the second floor level by stair. There's also an elevator that stops at the lobby, the ground floor, first floor and the second floor. And so you're kind of, you're kind of entering the building at, at as close as we can get to mid-height as well. And this also allows us to have the common spaces, the common area room on the ground floor also exits out at grade. To go directly out in that patio, so there's no, no step or ramp required.
So most of it's slab on-grade construction, there is a small kind of sub-basement for utilities?
For the, and then in terms of the roof height, this is just a diagram that shows that the, the, this is the allowable roof height and this is the mid-height that we're achieving and that, that is taken from actually the, the, basically the lowest point on the building. Along the street, along, yeah, it's pretty conservative, along the, the street elevation is, is quite a bit higher than this. The average across the street elevation is a little bit higher, we took it from the, from the lowest point here.
So Tom, can you, can you, I couldn't read these. But this is showing where a 40-foot-high building would be, a roof height.
Right, mid, the mid, yeah.
Of the gable.
Right, and this is where we are at, I can't read.
We're maybe almost two feet below the maximum, is that fair? Okay. So this is the ground floor. Again, as we've been describing, you would enter here, be able to go up or down. On the ground floor, we have most of the common use areas, the common room is here, which is kind of a multipurpose room. It can serve as a gathering space, workshop, training space, eating space. And it leads out to the patio, the resident services coordinator office would be directly next door to that room. We have a guest or public bathroom here. And down this corridor is a shared laundry room, this is a mechanical room. So the things that are most below grade are down here, mechanicals, laundry, stairwell. So that all of the units themselves can have good full windows for daylight. So everywhere you see a number B1, B2, B3, these are individual units. This is the first floor and stacked above that common room is the handicapped accessible unit, which is a larger unit with a larger bathroom and living area. And again, units all around here. But you can see there's a little bit of furniture layout in the rooms, just to give you a sense of kind of what someone might put into a unit this size. They do have each one has a closet, a little row kitchenette and a bathroom with a stand-up shower. And this is the upper floor, which is all residential, oops, I missed one element here. Property manager's office right on this first floor, kind of adjacent to the lobby where you come in. And then upper floor is units stacked on top of the floor below. Any comments you want to make, Tom, on the floor plan?
I, I think you have it pretty much, there's the, on the, the open stair only goes up to the, goes between the ground and the first floor. There are two enclosed egress stairs, one at either end. You can, on the ground floor, there's an entrance at the street that tenants could go in if they wanted to go down that path. And there's also an entrance out at the back.
At the patio.
At the patio and then also out here to where the gardens, gardens are there.
Right. This is just kind of a, an enlarged version of some sample units, they have slightly different sizes, but they're approximately the same square footage and definitely the same types of, you know, fixtures and features and finishes. One of the emphases for this project is energy efficiency. Low carbon footprint and trying to not use fossil fuels, so we have a goal of being Passive House certified, which means we have low energy use per person. A super insulated building envelope, efficient air source heat pump, sometimes called mini splits for heating, cooling and for domestic hot water. Mechanical fresh air through an energy recovery ventilator serving all areas. So the building is very tight, which means in order to have good air quality, we're not relying on people just opening windows. So it'll have circulating fresh air to every space in the building. Efficient lighting and some solar-powered lighting, site lighting, Energy Star appliances, PV panels to the max that we can get based on the roof that we are dealing with as well as the budget that we have to work with. Again, a goal of all electric utilities with no use of fossil fuels. A low-carbon footprint through small, efficient units in a walkable location, in close proximity to services shopping, et cetera. So reducing the number of tenants who own cars and reducing the number of vehicle trips per day. In terms of our timeline, this is just a quick snapshot, this is our best-case timeline. Where we're doing permitting through the summer, applying for funds potentially in the winter. If we were fortunate and, and well-prepared, getting funded in the summer, that the following year. Choosing a GC, going under construction, spring of 2022. Expecting a little over a year of construction period, we'll be doing marketing and, and lotteries leading up to the completion of construction. And then an occupancy lease-up period and then what we call stabilized operations, which is typically three to six months of full occupancy. I just wanted to revisit some of the comments that we had from the planning board members when we came in February and these were captured in a letter that was written on behalf of the planning board, a letter of support. Thank you very much for our project eligibility letter to the state. So one comment was to include one-bedroom apartments as well as studios. And so we did a number of floor plans and budget scenarios for a building that kind of combined different sizes of units. On both the construction and operating side, the budgets did not look viable. And making fewer units reduced Valley's ability to provide onsite services, because there was less revenue. Another comment was to install a roof over the smoking area, which we've done, we have kind of an open-air pavilion currently. That's provided in the plans, there's an image of it there that you can see. We talked about relocating the dumpsters and our, our failure to do that, to find another good place to put them. We do think because they're so far back and screened by a fence and due to grades, they will not be a high-visibility kind of item on the site. And we did look at the graphic depiction that we did of how this massing of the building would appear relative to neighboring buildings. And I think that brings us to the end of our presentation.
Thank you, that was an excellent, well-organized presentation. I still see no hands, but if there's any board members that have a question right now on this and then I'm gonna turn it over to Chris Bestrop, who has a few words to say. I see, oh, hands changing, sorry, I see Doug and then Maria.
Thanks for that, that was really a great presentation. I have one comment about the exterior elevations, I wonder if you could go to one of those?
Sure, give me one sec.
Yeah, so the band, the white band that separates the stone or whatever the base is from the siding that's above it. The first floor windows look too far above that, makes it look like it's a really huge, really high first floor and like, typically that kind of band is, is closer to the floor line inside.
Okay.
So, so it seems to me So, so it seems to me that it would look a little more natural if that transition point happened a few feet higher and closer to the first floor level.
Okay, thank you.
Maria?
Um, I just wanna thank you. I don't remember if last time this was passive house was a goal, but it really shows your commitment to energy efficiency and sort of that, you know, this is a building to stand the test of time and it's really meeting the challenges that we currently have with energy and carbon footprints. And so I do appreciate that because it's a passive house is a really stringent certification of most people. It's like this way of designing houses where you can like for a single-family home, heat the whole house with a light bulb for the whole winter. You know, it's that well insulated and airtight. And so, yeah, um, fresh air is a real issue with houses or buildings this type, but, but I'm sure you have a experienced team that can handle all that.
We did, we did not have the passive house goal the first time we met with you. It's, I think it's, it, you know, it's just becoming more done in our world. There are, there are incentive funds to do it. And the Sergeant House project that I showed you is so well insulated. It wasn't designed as passive house, but I think we're really close to meeting that standard. And so we, we figured we should reach for it in this one.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's a really good sort of message to the community and to the people who'll be living there. I don't know if you're gonna ever get to the lighting plan that was in our packet, but it wasn't in your presentation. And I can't read any of the numbers and I'm assuming there's no, I think one of your documents said there's no light spread to the neighbors.
Yeah.
But I wanna make sure there's enough light on this light. So the blobs for the, um, I don't know if Pam, you have, but basically I, I think, yeah, just more clarity on how well the light is lit for the next go-around or
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll review that photometrics plan as part of our presentation to the ZBA. And I know when, when we, the size that we gave out, it's, it's really hard to see the details. So we'll try to, we'll try to do something about that. Our intention is to be fully dark sky compliant, no light spill onto neighboring properties and to have a kind of even soft light. So it's not a lot of light, but what I've learned is it's easier to see when the, the light is fairly even across the site rather than having a bright light somewhere that creates dark spots somewhere else.
Yep, that makes sense. Right, right.
Those are solar ones.
Ah, okay. And yeah, I do appreciate all the, the visuals about showing how far back this building is set. So even though the scale meets all, you know, except for, I forget what part didn't, maybe all of it matched the zoning bylaw requirements, but that the scale feels a lot smaller than these elevations are showing. I mean, elevations are a very abstracted way to look at buildings anyways, because there's no perspective or no depth. But, but yeah, I appreciate the street views because it really shows its setback. The, the shape and massing of it kind of fits the neighborhood. So, you know, only when you're right up against it, would you ever see it the way elevations portray it.
Exactly.
But even so, I mean, the perspectives, they're a little isolated. I mean, I don't remember if I made the comment or someone else made the comment, but I was hoping that the perspectives would be a little bit more like in a context with buildings rather than the photo. But I, I feel pretty secure in knowing that because of how far setback it is, that it really isn't gonna dominate route nine. You know, it's really setback pretty well. And so I guess the perspectives are more just to show the building, not necessarily how it fits with the context, but, um,
Right.
Overall, yeah, it's a great project. I, um, yeah, I, I think that you, you designed it in a way that really, you know, articulate, you could have just made this really smooth box, but you really sort of, you know, went out of your way to make it articulated and match the context language. And then, yeah, then the passive house goal is just really sort of shows you, shows the commitment you have to making a really good building. So, um, you know, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Doug, I see your hand's still up. Do you have an additional question or is that just a leftover hand?
Leftover hand, my apologies.
No worries. Just wanted to make sure if you had something. I don't know if any other members. So at this point, I'm gonna move it to Chris to sort of let her, she can tell us what we're to do next. Chris, are you there?
Yeah, hi. So this is a comprehensive permit application that's going to the zoning board of appeals. Comprehensive permit is sometimes called 40B and many towns fear 40B because it means that a developer can come in and, you know, do something that the town may not like and get waivers from their zoning requirements. In our case, we have over 10% affordable housing. And that, that means that over 10% of our housing units overall are affordable based on the state affordability criteria. So, so 10%, I think it's actually over 12% of our housing is affordable and is on the state. They call it the subsidized housing inventory, which doesn't necessarily mean that the housing is subsidized. It's just that it's been recognized by the state. So in any event, Amherst doesn't, is not subject to what we call unfriendly 40B applications. So, but Amherst does welcome good projects that provide us with affordable housing. And we have many of them in town. We have Mill Valley Estates is one of these chapter 40B projects. Butternut Farm, which is at the corner of 116 and Long Meadow Drive is another one. Olympia Oaks, which you might be more familiar with because it was a recently done project up in North Amherst, provides about 42 or 44 units for families. We also have the, the North Square at the Mill District, which was done by Beacon Communities recently. And I think I'm missing one, but I can't remember. But anyway, so we have a number of these types of developments that have been presented to us. And it was, I think, most of them, except possibly from Mill Valley Estates, was done after Amherst reached its goal of 10% affordable housing units. So this is a way of encouraging affordable housing in Amherst. And so what a comprehensive permit does is it allows the zoning board of appeals to kind of take over all the other boards or committees or even some of the town staff permits and reviews and kind of bundle them all together, which makes it slightly easier for developers to get through the process. Obviously, this developer is doing a good job of going around to all the boards and committees and presenting the project. So everybody knows about it. And now you're being given an opportunity to review this project and to make recommendations to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals is the permit granting authority in this case. And you already did make comments back in February. I included your comment the letter describing your comments from your February 19th meeting included in, in your packet today. It's towards the end of your packet. But anyway, if you wanted to add to those comments and recommendations or just take a vote to support this project, that would be welcome.
Thank you, Chris, for those helpful instructions. So I, so I assume, so we can just support it, but if we have specific recommendations to the ZBA, now would be the time to raise your hand and put them out to the board to see if there's general agreement that that should be added on. And I just wanna say, especially to Laura, thank you for really listening to us, obviously, the last time and coming back and really showing, I had forgotten some of the things we had asked. So thank you. It, you know, this seems really well thought out. So
Thank you.
So I, I don't know if there's much to comment on, but, um,
Well, may I, may I offer a comment that one, one neighbor called me. She's been interested in this project and concerned about it. And one of the comments she made, and this may be a minor thing, but I'm gonna mention it anyway, because I told her I would. But the smoking, the shed that is designated for smoking, she's concerned that it will be too visible from the Amherst College side of the fence, which is on the west side of this property. And she wondered if the smoking shed could be turned around so it's oriented towards this building. And then she also suggested strong screening between it and the Amherst College property. And I think, you know, she's, she's worried because in Amherst, we generally don't encourage smoking. In this case, it's important to have this facility available because of the population who lives here. But she just wondered if that could be managed. And I noticed that you did talk about smoking structure and Amherst College, but what kind of screening is that? Is it penetrable? Is it evergreen?
So the comment has come to us as well in writing and verbally from the neighbor. And so we've been talking a little bit with each other, mainly myself and Rachel. And I think we can accommodate some of those requests. We can certainly have, you know, if we had deciduous plantings, we can do more evergreen-type plantings. The pavilion is open. It's like a little, it's like a little pavilion, but tiny. It would certainly be possible to put some siding on that, not necessarily solid siding, but you know, some staggered boards or something that would give it a little bit of screening, but still not put people into a, you know, a box. We, our preference is that it face the view rather than the house next to it. If you've ever had the privilege of walking on this site, it has a wonderful long view down the hill to the mountains. So that's kind of why we were wanting to orient it that way. So I think, you know, we can continue to think about it and massage it and discuss it. And I certainly think we can easily meet part of that request. I think it would be a shame to turn it around and face it, you know, toward the building that's next to it. We think it could have a nice, you know, almost therapeutic quality, being able to sit in it and look down into the valley. So those are our thoughts so far on that.
Laura, can I just clarify a little bit on that smoking shed? So you said all four walls are open.
Yes.
So when you say facing, you just mean like the benches or whatever are looking out that way. So even if you turn the bench around, it's still open walls. And just to add on a comment that Maria had said earlier, she was commenting on the splits that are there. And she had mentioned noise, but now I'm thinking, because there's not a scale on the story, but intake, you know, I wouldn't want it close enough that the smoke could get sucked into the units and then people inside could smell it. That was my, but I know you're trying to balance where to put it, but I just wanted to add that.
So just to clarify, currently it's an open pavilion with no walls. In response to this neighbor's comment, we began brainstorming about could we add some cladding on it and where would it go? The intake for the fresh air is not where the mini splits are. They do the heating and cooling. And I believe all of the ERVs, I think, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, the intake and outtake is on the front of the building. So there are two kind of segregated systems, the heating and cooling, and then the fresh air circulation. You're muted, Tom. Just nod if I'm right.
You are right. There may be some on the back, but they're, they're up at the upper levels and they're very high in the building.
And, and they're not adjacent to this, the
Smoking area and the, the mini splits don't have any air.
So smoking is always a hot topic. We, we have, we have made properties non-smoking before entirely. And then we have folks standing on the sidewalk out front smoking. So we thought that would be less desirable than what we're proposing, but it's always a tricky issue.
It is. I'm not seeing other hands, so I'm just gonna ask one more question about the smoking. So on the, I'm looking at the, it sort of shows the landscape, the illustrative site plan. So it looks like trees in front of it, or is that low bushes? You mentioned a view to the west, but if the trees are too high, that sort of blocks it. But also I think what this neighbor is saying is, you know, if people are walking by at Amherst College, will they be able to see people sitting on a bench smoking? So just clarifying the landscape.
Yeah. So I went, I pulled us back to that site plan page. Here's the smoking area. So this distance, I don't know, Rachel, help me out. Are we looking about 20, 15, 20 feet going this way?
Yeah, yeah.
About 15 or 20 feet. And then we have another, you know, maybe 15 feet. And then we have a parking lot. So we're not adjacent, this smoking area is not adjacent to the field or the field house. It's adjacent to park, a parking lot. So it's not a place where people are spending time necessarily. I hear once in a while, there's big events and there might be people there, but in general, there are cars here or it's empty. So in terms of the visual, these are, I believe, deciduous. And that's what I was referring to. It's certainly could be swapped out for something that's more of an evergreen style.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions that people wanna add or Maria? And then I, oh, hands popping on and off. Maria?
Am I reading that site plan correctly where you have an existing fence that you're gonna, it remains and that's on the sort of left side of the page as we're looking at? But does it also wrap around the top side or not? Because I'm
Yes, yeah. So Amherst College owns a kind of black metal
Right.
fence that starts here and it comes to the edge of there. I think it comes to about here. Yeah. This way.
And it's like eight feet high or so, or it's pretty
It's that high. But they also have a pretty nice row of arborvitae that are growing in this area. So we'll be kind of doubling up on the vegetation between the athletic field and the building.
Okay, alright, thanks.
And then the neighbors on this side have requested removal of the trees that are there now and an eight-foot fence, cedar fence and plantings on both sides. And that's what we're showing.
I'm still not seeing any other members' hands. So at this time, we could just have a motion where, that we could vote on in support of this project.
Excuse me, Christine, there was one, there was one attendee who had a comment.
Right, thank you. So so I did say that we would take public comment for a max of 30 minutes and that the board won't be commenting on comments tonight, but that Ms. Bestrop, the director of planning, per her decision, she has some clarifying information that she might speak to the question. So at this time, I see one hand. So if there's any others who want to speak on this, raise their hands now. Confirming Pam, are there any telephone calls?
No, I just see the one person who is named Catherine Sims.
Great. So if we can allow her to turn on her mic and I'll say, well, welcome to Catherine Sims. Please give your name and address, especially if you're not Catherine Sims.
Thanks. I, I am, yes. And, but I would prefer to not have my name be part of the permanent record, if that's okay. I do live close to this property and have talked to Christine on multiple occasions. So I'm and to Laura. So I think they can probably both vouch that I am legitimately a neighbor of the property. Thank you very much for letting me speak. Can you hear me okay?
We can. You're very clear.
Okay, do you see me or do you just hear me?
We do not see you. We only hear you.
I'm not so familiar with this format. It is new to me.
We, it's still pretty new to us too, so.
Yes. Thank you very much. I, I did wanna make a public comment. So from the beginning, I've actually been here since the beginning of your meeting. And I definitely agree with a lot of what was said earlier about having a true housing crisis in town. And I think that 40B is a very appropriate use here to increase housing. And I definitely support the development of affordable housing at 132 North Hampton Road. And I do wanna especially thank Christine for trying to meet with neighbors throughout this process. I'm not the neighbor she was referring to earlier. But I do have some similar questions about smoking. So I guess I just wanna note overall that the developer here is asking for a special permit. And the planning board spent a lot of time talking earlier about how the, the bar for special permits to override existing use should be pretty high. That should be a high bar of review. And I would like to bring up two specific issues that I think the board really should consider very seriously at this two specific issues that I think the board really should consider very seriously at this time. Um the first one, it sounds like you have considered a little bit, which is really the need for family housing or for this development to include something other than just single unit housing. Um that has consistently been stated to be the highest need for affordable housing in the state and in the town of Amherst. It's it's for family housing. If you look at the state Affordable Housing Guidelines, um I was just looking them up during the meeting. On page seventy-two, they say that there is a critical need for all housing in the state, but particularly family and special needs housing for low and moderate income house. And that the program that they're applying to for funding here encourages the development of that uh family-oriented house. And so I I would ask the board to try to consider seriously why there is no family or family special needs housing being developed here in what would be such a great family location, right? There are twenty-eight kids within the five-hundred-foot buffer of this development. Uh twenty-one resident children and and four frequently uh visiting grandkids. Um and then uh a couple others. Uh we've estimated that there's thirty to forty children in a radius of point three miles of this development. Laura didn't really mention any of that when she talked about characterizing the neighborhood, but um there are a lot of kids here. And, you know, for a six-million-dollar project, it just seems like a really lost opportunity that there would be no family housing to try to answer these these needs. Um the planning board apparently did ask them to think about one-bedroom apartments. And so I guess I'm just asking, did you ever see those budgets that they prepared? Did you look closely at the numbers? Did you think about whether it was possible to actually include family housing as part of this development? So that's first point. Second point, um hopefully, if I may speak for a couple more minutes. Uh second point and question would be that this development really should be a smoke-free community. I was glad to hear Laura say that they have done that for some of their other developments. Um and as Christine mentioned, the town of Amherst is a smoke-free community. If you look at the town regulations, they say uh they say scientific evidence indicates that there is no risk-free level of exposure to secondhand smoke and that it causes disease and premature death in children and adults. The town of Amherst doesn't allow any smoking in public buildings. It doesn't allow any smoking within twenty feet of public buildings. Um and other recent and recently updated developments with affordable housing in town are smoke-free. So it is my understanding that Rolling Green is a smoke-free community and that the North Square at the Mill District, which was recently developed and went through an extensive process like this one, is also a smoke-free community. Why should the North Square of the Mill District be a smoke-free community? And these residents shouldn't have those same rights to be a smoke-free community. Um I think this is entirely possible and could be recommended by the planning board uh to the zoning board. And um I think, you know, given the high demand for affordable housing, there's likely many future residents who would find the smoke-free aspect a very attractive feature. Um so I don't think it would detract at all from what they're trying to do. And I think it would just make it even better than it already is. Um I do also just really want to highlight what is happening at that site. That parking lot is a place where uh everybody is coming and going. That's also the entrance to Pratt Field. That is where the accessible parking happens uh for all of the games. There are frequently parents setting up tailgates along that fence that's shown in the picture right here. There are athletes coming and going uh to different events, you know, hanging out there, waiting for the bus right up next to that fence all the time. Um on the other side, on the left side, is the track. Probably a hundred feet away is the track. Like, this is just right in the middle of an athletic facility. And that is not really an appropriate place for there to be smoking, I don't think. Um so, you know, I I would love there to be smoking if there were space on the parcel for that to happen in a in a safe way. I just don't see that there is any actual space on a parcel of this size with a building of this size for there to be a safe place for smoking. For the residents too, you all mentioned, you know, how is there going to be safe intake uh of air to the building? And I think it would just be so much better to make this a smoke-free community. So those are the two points I really hope the the planning board will take seriously, uh family housing and a smoke-free community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I don't see any other public hands. Um so I'll go back to the panelists. Uh so is there any more comments the board wants to make? Or do we want to make a motion and support? I just want to say, uh, you know, there's lots of things to love about this. Um and I I just want to encourage, I love the warm exterior lights that you talked about, Laura, rather than the blue. I think that's an important, that's one of my little pet peeves. Love the covered bike storage, another one of my little things. Um I like the grass pavers, uh the flow of the sidewalks. I think the gardening options are awesome. Um and the setback being so large, I think is uh an asset. Um it's gonna be a beautiful building, but it's also, I think, at first, nice to minimize its strength and um get people used to it. Uh so um I see Janet's hand.
You know, I think I asked this question last time, but I don't quite remember the answer. So if somebody um was in this apartment and renting and they have a child, or if you got pregnant and had a child, could you stay in the apartment? If you um, could the child live with you or would you have to move out? Right. We talked last time about people who might be getting um, you know, restoring their parental rights and having visitation. But they also could just be divorced and have, you know, visitation times back and forth. And I just don't, I'm wondering if there's some flexibility there, because I think the goal here is really to brought, provide people with homes and have them stay in our community, not kind of bounce from spot to spot, which is the problem you're trying to eradicate. Um so it depends on the size of the unit. So there's a Board of Health um standard for how many square feet you need per person in a unit. So larger than two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, you can have a second occupant. If it's smaller than that, it's only designed for a single occupant. So there's some variability in the size of these units. Most of them are sized for a single person. Uh the handicapped units, for example, would meet that threshold and be be larger. Um we've owned, Valley's owned housing like this for decades. Um and we have not seen a lot of examples where people have wanted to live um in, to to put more than one person in a space this size. Um we have had tenants who've gotten pregnant. We have had tenants who've re-unified with their children. And we've simply worked with them to find a more suitably sized uh place to live.
Okay.
If I can add, can I add one thing to that, Laura? We, there are a bunch of, number of units that are in the corner of the building, the outside corners, and those are two-hundred-and-sixty-six square feet. So they're, they're over two-fifty. So technically, that might be possible.
So I'm not seeing any hands. Um does someone want to make a motion in support of this effort to send to the ZBA? I see Michael's hand and then Maria.
Thank you. I I move the uh planning board recommend to the zoning board of appeals the granting a comprehensive permit uh for the uh one-thirty-two North Hampton Road property as designed.
Thank you, Michael. And Maria has seconded. Thank you. Um is there any discussion on that? I'm seeing no hands, so if I Okay, so at this point, we could move to a roll call vote. Um we have the motion that Michael just said. And I will go through the roll call. Still see no hands. Okay. Michael, burp whistle?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Aven?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
And Christine, uh yes. So that's seven zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming, um and thank you for all your hard work. This is definitely something that's needed in Amherst. I'm sorry, you don't have a magic wand to get to twenty twenty-three.
I know. It's, it's, it's a, it's amazing how long these things take. They eventually happen, but it it's a long haul.
Thanks for continuing on.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Laura.
Sure.
Thank you, Laura. Laura, will you forward be your slides?
Of course.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so at this time, we're gonna move on with our agenda. And we'll go to item five. Chris, is there any old business?
No old business.
Okay, is there any? Item six, new business?
No new business.
Are there any um item seven, Form A, A and R subdivision applications?
No Form As.
Okay, let's keep going. Any upcoming ZBA applications?
No, nothing new.
Okay, I suppose it's only been a week, so anyways, um uh item nine, upcoming SPP, SPR, SUVs applications?
No.
Okay, uh ten, we'll move on to planning board committee and liaison reports. Um I'll just run through it. We haven't done that uh PVPC. Um Jack, is there anything to report on that? Any upcoming meetings?
Uh there is. Apologetic here. I don't know when it is. Uh I think it's, it might be next Thursday.
Okay.
Thought about.
You can probably look on their website.
So many Zoom meetings, you know?
And now you have to watch for two. I just want to mention again that Jack has been invited to be on the executive committee um for PVPC. So um you'll have twice as much to report on. Uh CPAC, Community Preservation Act Committee. Michael, I know you guys have a meeting coming up.
Yeah, there's been significant amount of conversation relative to the funding, uh the allocation, the recommendation, sorry, for funding uh of the uh uh Special Collections Wing of the library. There was um a, and a straw vote was taken last spring before the uh COVID-nineteen uh scare came on. And that was uh just that was, it was a straw vote. The usual process for the committee is to take a straw vote, to place the requested items on a slate, and then go back and review them individually. Uh that review didn't happen. Um in the meantime, um while we were waiting for that, awaiting that to happen, several members, two members of the committee uh contacted uh people at the um, at the state level about the propriety of using CPA funds to um essentially build a new wing. Uh the issue being whether or not historic preservation can be used, monies can be used to build something new. Um the reason the issue came up was that, at least one of the reasons the issue came up was that when the library made its initial proposal, which was for one and a half million dollars as opposed to one million, which was subsequently suggested. Um the uh formula, a formula was introduced, which suggested that the CPA monies should equal ten-point-oh-two percent of the total budget of the library. Because this, the Special Collections Wing was going to take up ten-point-two percent, ten-ten-point-oh-two percent of the new building. Um some people on the committee felt that it was inappropriate for the committee to be providing money for bricks and mortar um and would prefer to be providing money for specific items such as um climate control, uh fire suppression, uh items that were not necessarily part of the library, would not have necessarily been part of the library's overall budget if the library did not have a special collections room. Um so over the last three weeks or so, uh this issue has been bounced back and forth among the members of this, of CPAC and uh has resulted in, as of the day before yesterday, or maybe a little bit before that, a a letter from the town manager saying essentially that uh CPAC's input has already been received and that the um uh there's no longer, it's, it's work is done. There's no longer need for another meeting. Uh nonetheless, we are having another meeting. And I'm not quite sure uh under what authority and uh and I'm not sure exactly what is intended to be done at that meeting. Uh the only thing I am sure about it is that it's uh June thirtieth uh at six o'clock. Um so that's about as much as I know about the issue.
Thank you. Who is your staff liaison for that group?
Um Anthony, uh what's his last name?
Delaney.
Anthony Delaney.
Okay.
And working, essentially working for Sonia Aldrich.
So are you taking comments and?
We are getting comments. I'm not sure that's the thing. We had something like twenty-five comments, uh essentially all uh against, almost all against uh the uh allocation of the funds for the purposes requested.
I just have one more question. So if the monies didn't go to this Special Collections Library wing, what would happen to that money?
Oh, it would be, it would be put on hold for next year. Uh it is also, sorry, it has also been suggested that should the library choose to bring another slightly different proposal, asking for essentially the same amount of money, but specifying specific uses for that money, then the, then members of the committee would have a different point of view on on the issue.
Like the climate change?
Yeah.
That you said before, which I know, the irony of it is, it's a new building to house historic documents that need modern control, but yeah.
Exactly, that's the problem.
Yeah. Um I see Jack and then Janet's hand.
Oh, um I I don't, I don't understand the debate and 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 why we would, you know, it's so hard to get money, number one. But I I feel like splitting hairs, we have money. It's been uh justified by town council that we're in the, you know, fine. I I don't understand why you, why CPAC would be doing such a thing. I'm I'm sorry, but that's just my, that's my feeling. It just seems, yeah, I, wow, I, that's all I can say.
Thank you. And I see Janet and Michael's hand up, but you're, there, yeah, Janet? Uh Janet, your mic is off.
I'm falling into my old habits. Um I have a question about timing. So the request is coming for CPAC money. You know, it it can't, it starts in the fall and it processes and you say yes or no, and then it goes to the town council. But if the library has to, the library new project has to go through a whole process and probably that money wouldn't be needed for several years. So do you just take that million and stick it in account? Or it just seems like the timing is off or something? Is that, you know, because it, I mean, I I'm also thinking, I was at an Amherst or attended um an Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust meeting, and they were looking for extra money for people, to keep people in their homes, like just basically giving people rent money. And they had two-hundred-thousand dollars they could hand out, and they were looking for more sources. And so I was kind of thinking, oh, that's an immediate need because of the COVID epidemic. And even if you wanted to give that money to the library, it wouldn't be used for a couple of years. So how how does that timing issue work out? That makes sense?
Uh Michael, it
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I got unmuted. I got a hand raised lowered for some reason. Uh to to Janet's question, the timing is uh is typical of CPAC uh recommendations. Many recommendations from CPAC are for two, three-year, over two or three-year periods. Uh so that's not unusual. Uh it, the money is not um spent until it's needed, but it's allocated. And we're, CPAC is allowed to allocate X number, to recommend the allocation of X number of dollars per year based on a complicated state formula, uh something like a hundred and, a million and five-hundred thousand, something like that this year. Um so uh the notion that um the library is Um, so, uh, the notion that, um, the library is applying for it now, prior to the approval of the, uh, overall proposal by the town council, and prior to any kind of voter approval that may or may not be necessary, uh, and prior to the actual delivery of the library, the state library grant, uh, is not inconsistent with the way the CPAC generally, uh, operates. Those of, those who are, uh, uh, voting or interested in the further discussion of this issue, are very mindful of the fact that the, uh, that certainly the current emergency housing needs, uh, are part of CPAC's, uh, overall, uh, portfolio.
Uh, Michael, I have one more question, so I don't have an legal opinion, but I, I understand the dispute is, can you, can CPAC give money to a new building? Like, can they, new construction for historic preservation? And the argument back is, it's not for the new building, it's for space in the new building, which is, seems like a lawyer's debate, is there more, like, research going to be done than tho- those two positions? There's some help on the way, because it's, you know, I mean, there are, they are called legal opinions for a reason.
Uh, the, the Chair of, of CPAC, uh, contacted the, uh, uh, Stuart Siguenor, the Director of, um, I can't remember the name of the exact organization, if I can find it. Anyway, it's a state organization, not a governmental organization, but a state organization who's, who takes it as their responsibility to review and advise on the various issues relating to, to the Community Preservation Act. The, uh, town, that, 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 um, that information, uh, was, uh, supplanted, supported by, uh, another conversation that one of the board members had with, uh, an attorney in the, in a, in a governmental office, I get the details, I get, have eluded me at the moment. Um, and that, that, uh, opinion, uh, supported the notion that, um, it was an inappropriate use of CPAC funds, but to, to, I'm going to come back to the question of, uh, the other side, the, uh, it appears to some of us that the, um, the, the legislation which authorizes CPA funds is, is very specific in saying that CPA funds may not be used for new constructions. CPA funds in the historic preservation category cannot be used for new construction. The, uh, the town manager consulted, uh, the town's lawyer, and, uh, came back with, uh, a, um, an opinion, uh, which, uh, while not exactly contradicting that, the opinion that, uh, the, the board got from, uh, the, the state offices, which said that it, it basically is, um, an open question, uh, that there's no law, uh, there's no law on which, no adjudicated law on which, uh, that claim of legality or illegality could be made, and it's up to the, uh, local, um, CPAC to, uh, to make that judgment. So that's, does that answer your question? I hope so.
I was just wondering, is there going to be more research or some other sources, or is it just going to be?
Well, like any, like any, like any, um, commissioner, committee, or board, uh, we're at, we're at the mercy of, for staff support, at the mercy of, uh, whoever the staff support is. Uh, and in this case, uh, it has been, as far as I understand it, decided that, uh, this is a closed issue. And so therefore, there is no more, uh, research being done. Now, what effect another vote will have on this issue, I have no idea, but we're having a meeting.
Thank you. Again, on June thirtieth at six PM?
Yes.
And that will be on Zoom, so you can.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Michael, um, I think we all had a lot of questions on that. Um, Agricultural Commission, David, is there anything, have you guys been meeting? I see, I saw you looking for members. Maybe David's not, no, you look frozen, David.
He does look frozen.
Um, I'll come back, uh, back to Michael, Designer Review Board.
Nothing to report.
Okay, and, uh, Maria, zoning, this hasn't met, so, um.
Two.
Oh, now you're choppy, and you did move, oh, I see you blink, David, are you there?
I, I am here.
Is there?
I, I missed the Agricultural Commission meeting, I've, I've done.
You were frozen, um, now you're unfrozen, is there anything to report?
I missed the meeting, and I have nothing to report.
Okay, and they have monthly meetings, how often?
Yes, I think it's the first or second Tuesday.
Okay. Well, thank you, uh, Report of Chair, I have nothing, Report of Staff, Chris?
I don't have any report, I just appreciate everybody listening to me tonight about my point of view about the voting requirements, and it was a very robust discussion, so, um, I feel satisfied that I was well heard, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, we appreciate all your hard work. I think we can do an adjournment, do I have a motion? We'll end this gig at nine fifty-seven. Good work, everybody.